Scott County Board of Adjustment on May 12, 2025. First thing on the agenda is roll call.
Commissioner Hussein.
Present.
Commissioner Pika.
Here.
Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Van Haas.
Here.
Commissioner Hentges.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Next thing on the agenda is introductions. To my far left is Brad Davis, our planning manager. Jason Timas, Rachel Nossbush, deputy clerk. In the audience, we have Marty Schmidt, our zoning manager. Greg Wagner, our senior planner. Nathan Hall, associate planner, and our county commissioner, Tom Wolfe. Okay, next thing on the agenda is approval of April 14, 2025 minutes. The board has an opportunity to review the minutes. Is there any changes or deletions to the minutes? Not to have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
A motion and second to approve the minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor say nay. Minutes are approved. Next thing and the only other thing on the agenda is a public hearing, PL number 2025-025, request for a variance from the required eight-and-a-half-foot front yard setback to 3.1 feet. Variance to increase the size of non-conforming structure by more than 50% and a variance to increase the lot impervious surface beyond the 25% allowed in RR-3 zoning district. Kevin Elizabeth Becker, applicant and property owners in section 12 of Helena Township. And Nathan, you're going to present this to the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair. And good evening, commissioners. The subject property is located in section 12 of Helena Township. The property sits between County Highway 64 and Cedar Lake. And the combined area of these two lots that the applicant has, that they intend to combine, is just over 13,000 square feet. And so even with the two lots combined, they're still beneath the minimum lot size in the RR-3 district of 20,000 square feet. And between the existing house accessory structure, pathways, driveway on the property, it's currently a little over 23% impervious area. And the property is currently compliant. It's 25% is the maximum in the shoreland ordinance. The applicant intends to remove the existing driveway, other impervious surfaces prior to constructing the new driveway and the home addition, which would consist of an attached garage. The home currently does not have an attached garage and also would include living space on the second level. After the proposed changes, the impervious lot coverage would be over 30%. Now, the average of the two adjacent structures can be used to calculate the minimum front setback. And so in an earlier rendition, it showed that the attached garage would be 3.1 feet from County Highway 64 right-of-way. Now, the applicant did later provide a revised plan. This is what was provided in the staff report that would bring that attached garage further back from the right-of-way, being compliant with the average setback. However, that caused the garage to encroach into the shore impact zone, not going closer than the current house was. But it did go into the shore impact zone with this proposal and would also increase the impervious lot coverage. And so we did discuss this with the applicant, and the applicant has submitted a new plan that respects the average setback from the county highway and also remains outside of the shore impact zone. The proposed impervious lot coverage, now this is when we removed some of the things. So when we include the entire lot area of about 13,000 square feet and remove things that were getting counted in the survey, like the driveway apron in this area of the right-of-way, the landscaping, et cetera, that comes to just over 30% with this newest design. I calculated about 30.3%. And the minimum setback to the ordinary high water level is 75 feet on Cedar Lake. So the existing home is a legal non-conforming structure. It was built and put in place prior to the setback requirements on Cedar Lake. The applicants are not proposing to encroach any further into that setback, but they will be expanding this structure, legal non-conforming structure, by more than 50%. And so that is the other component of this variance request. This area, Cedar Lake, it was developed in the late 1950s, early 1960s, and variances on Cedar Lake for the reduction of setback requirements, impervious lot coverage are not unfurted of. There have been a number of properties here on the north side of Cedar Lake where variances have been issued. And the small legal non-conforming size of this parcel does pose challenges for modifying the existing home into a modern home with an attached garage in such a way that 25% or less of the property would be covered by impervious surfaces. There are other neighboring properties that are currently exceeding the lot coverage maximum and are located closer to the right-of-way or to the ordinary high water level than the required setback. For example, the neighboring house was, there was a variance issued for the neighboring house to be at 17 feet from the right-of-way. That came before this board a couple of years ago. And it also, a component of that variance was to be at 39% impervious lot coverage on that property where they were demolishing and rebuilding that home. In that instance, though, that was a unique circumstance. The justification was that the existing home was at 40%, I believe so. They were reducing in that instance is why it was at that 39%. The Scott County zoning ordinance does require that the requested variance is the minimum variance, which would alleviate the hardship. The Scott County Highway Department, they have reviewed this request, and they did not support the addition being placed closer to the right-of-way than the average setback would allow for. And the applicant has addressed that concern with this most recent design. And the Scott County Natural Resources Department has reviewed the request and has emphasized that the legal non-conforming structure should not be expanded into the shore impact zone, which the applicant has also now addressed, that component, that comment as well. The department recommended that the impervious surface not exceed 30% and that best management practices such as rain garden, vegetative swales, natural shoreline buffer be implemented to reduce and treat runoff into the lake. And the department would also like to work with the applicant to determine if the existing riprap is in compliance with the shoreland ordinance standards. And if the riprap is not in compliance with those standards, the department notes that it would need to be brought into compliance as part of the variance approval. The Minnesota DNR, they have commented on this request, and they have noted, they, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, they have noted that due to the unique circumstances of the lot, they do not consider this variance request to be problematic. They did note that if approved, the installation of a vegetative buffer directing gutters away from the shore area, soil stabilization, or other methods to increase infiltration should be considered. So some similar comments to our natural resources department there. And Helena Township did meet on the first of this month, and there was unfortunately some confusion there with the applicant and the township on the meeting date there. And so the applicant does not have a township recommendation at this time. And Heather, Shane, the town clerk of Helena did email me and did state that they can get the applicant on the May 21 workshop meeting that they are having. But as of now, we do not have a township recommendation. Now, I can certainly go through the staff recommendation, and we can talk more about how the town board, how this board may want to proceed at this time without the township recommendation. So the recommendation as listed in the staff report was that, based on the small legal non-conforming parcel size, staff is supportive of a variance to increase the impervious lot coverage maximum to 30%. Note that is a little bit less than what the applicant is proposing. And to increase the size of legal non-conforming structure by more than 50%, subject to a review of shoreland best management practices by the natural resources department staff. Staff was not supportive of the setback from, the variance from the road right-of-way setback, and the applicant has addressed that at this time. And so, Mr. Chair, if this board would like to proceed, they may, the board may want to table this to an upcoming meeting until we can get the township recommendation. Another option may be if this board would like to proceed at this time with a motion on this variance. There could be a component added to the recommendation, or I'm sorry, to the variance approval of that the applicant shall address all concerns of the township prior to receiving a building permit. So we can certainly discuss that language more, but I will certainly stand by for any questions. And the applicant is here tonight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. There are questions from the board?
Mr. Chair. Nathan, I'm having, maybe I'm confused or not, but you have a motion tonight, but there's no township action. Is that right?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Robbins, we do not have a township recommendation regarding this, this item.
And the reason for that is because, did you take it to the township? I know you said it, but I'm not sure I heard it. Something happened at that meeting, the township meeting?
Yep. Commissioner Robbins, there was some confusion on the schedule of the township and which township would be involved in this. And so the applicant did not attend that meeting. And by the time that the township received our staff report and all the information, it was past the May 1 meeting.
Okay. And so, do I understand then, one more, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
That you have a motion here, and it's, you're suggesting that we decide whether we want to go forward with this or not, right?
Correct, Commissioner Robbins.
And then you said something about we could condition something on township action?
Yes, Commissioner Robbins, there are a couple of different ways that this could be approached. One would be to provide additional conditions on the motion tonight regarding the township approval, township recommendation, if the, that any, excuse me, any items that the township brings up would need to be addressed prior to building permit approval, or if this board is more comfortable with simply tabling this item until a future meeting, that is certainly something that the board may consider as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, is anyone from the township present? We could proceed with the motion pending, pending the results of the township approval.
Sure.
And if there's no hook there, then they can proceed and get it in before the commissioners. So we wouldn't lose any time here.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Nathan, just to point a clarification, that the garage I saw has living space above it, is that meant to be an extension of the home's living space or is that a separate residence?
Good question. Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hentges, that is intended to be a bedroom, a master suite for the main house. It is not intended to be an accessory dwelling unit or some other unit.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, what about the highway department, county highway department, do they have, have they recommended, what is their recommendation?
Yep. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hussein, the highway department did provide a recommendation, a comment letter, and they noted that they were not supportive of the garage being located closer than the average setback would allow for, which is 8.25 feet. The applicant has now revised their plans to bring it in line with that recommendation, in line with the required setback based on the average of the neighboring properties. The highway department also had a couple of other comments that was included in their memo about reducing impervious surface within the county right-of-way and also...
So is the new plan in conformance of the highway department's requirement?
Yes, Commissioner Hussein, this has been run by our transportation planner, and they are...
Okay.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair. Question. Go ahead. Just for clarification on this, so the modified plan, there isn't a setback either to the highway side or the ordinary high watermark, right, from where we're at? So that, so variance would not be required there. The only variance required at this point with the modified plan that you showed us here tonight would be the more than 50% addition and 30% plus a little bit on the impervious surface for the whole lot. Is that correct?
Correct, Commissioner Van Haas. It is, the original variance request had three different components. One was the setback from the right-of-way, and the other was that increasing of the impervious, or increasing of the impervious area and also the increase of the legal non-conforming structure. Now, the setback from the right-of-way, that component of the variance is now no longer needed.
Any other questions from the board?
Yes. Nathan, how time critical is this?
Commissioner Robbins, the applicant may be able to better speak to the timetable that they're on regarding...
All right. I appreciate that. That's fine.
I just have a general comment. There's been a lot of variances on this lake, and it's just because of the nature of the housing built back in the 50s and 60s. I appreciate the applicant working with staff to get the right-of-ways taken away, squared away with the setback from the lake and from the road. So I think they did a good job working with the staff on that. Okay. Any other questions?
One question. So what side of the highway is utilities, the sewer and water, is that within that variance? Or, I understand there is sewer and water running through there. Is that on the same side as the house then?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Pika, I'm not sure how the, is your question about the public sewer and water or the public...
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think they're on well. It's sewer and water runs through there, but not necessarily, I'm not sure what side of the highway it's on. I'm just kind of curious.
And, yeah, Commissioner Pika, I believe they may be on well, I do believe they have public sewer that runs around the lake here, and how that, the side of the road that's on and how that connects into the property, I'm not sure about that.
Okay.
They brought in sewer, and they're around that lake a number of years back.
They did run it around there.
Oh, yes, they have sewer.
But what side of the road is it on?
Well, it doesn't matter. It's in the road right-of-way.
Oh, it's in the road right-of-way?
Yeah, of course it is.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I'll just make a comment. I was out at the site today and looked at it. We did a variance on the house next door, so I was familiar with that and gone to there. And if you look at where this is, it's a tight area between where the lake shore comes up to the road right-of-way there, and the houses are all pretty much in line there. So just to, if you haven't been there, so.
Any other comments? Not this a public hearing? Anybody like to address the board regarding this variance? Not to have a motion to close the public hearing?
We'll move.
Second.
A motion and second to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed, and your wishes on this request?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Are we ready for more questions?
Yeah. I'm just going to discuss, so if you want to make a motion, go ahead.
You ready?
Well, I'll discuss when you make the motion.
Okay.
One way or the other.
Based on the hardship criteria for granting a variance, I recommend approval of a variance to increase the size of the non-conforming structure by more than 50% and to increase the impervious lot coverage to 30%, with the condition that the applicant maintains the average setback of 8.25 feet to the road right-of-way, does not encroach on the shore impact zone, and includes best management practices and design. With an addendum pending the outcome of the vote with the township, which is going to occur on May 15?
Yeah.
2021.
21st, okay. That's my motion. We entertain a friendly addendum.
Yeah, I say a couple of things. I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Is it seconded? Yeah, all right. I'm always nervous to go ahead with something without the community that's closest affected voting on that. I just don't like to do it. My colleagues have noted that the applicant and the staff have worked hard on this to bring it into line with all of the other properties. I'm not against the project at all, but I don't like, and I guess what I would say is, and maybe it's already been said, but if this, if we pass this tonight, it wouldn't go to the commissioners before it went to the township, right? Brad, how does that work?
Yeah, Commissioner, as a reminder, this is the board of adjustment, which makes the final decision on all variances. So there is no recommendation to the county board. The decision ends here tonight. The applicant is here. If you do want to ask the applicant on the timeline, I know that question came up earlier to, just so that you're fully aware of the timelines before you make a decision tonight.
Can they, I did ask about the timeline. Does anybody want to speak to that?
Yeah, it was...
Could you come up to the podium? There's a place to sign in, state your name, and address the board here.
So, when I, I'm Kevin Becker, the property owner. When we first purchased the house this winter, basically, we moved in in February, I had letters from Cedar Lake Township. That was my mailing address, it was Cedar Lake. And so I was under the assumption I was in Cedar Lake Township. I got on their agenda to run, you know, while we were making these plans. And after May 1, I found out that we were in Helena Township. So I got on, I was on the, I think their meeting was May 8. So I was on their agenda, and they knew where my address was. They didn't catch the mistake, and I'm 300 feet into Helena. So that's where that mix-up was. So I was, I had already had been on their agenda, and then we had, so that's how we got on the 21st.
Mr. Chef, I could, you know, that makes a lot of difference, because you really did try to get before the township and then, you know, went to one meeting, found out you were in another one, tried to get on that agenda. You know, as far as I'm concerned, that makes a lot of difference to me in terms of this whole order of things. So thanks for your response. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I just have a suggestion that we postpone deciding on this till we get the decision from the town hall, township.
Any other questions? Not, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor? variance has been approved.
Thank you.
Anything else, Brad, for the board? Have a motion to close the board of adjustment?
Some.
Motion, have a second, close?
Second.
Second motion, second to close the board of adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, aye. Board adjustments closed, moving on to planning.
I call to order the Scott County Planning Advisory Commission meeting for May 12, 2025, and we'll start with roll call and introductions.
Commissioner Hussein.
Present.
Commissioner Pika.
Here.
Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Van Haas.
Here.
Commissioner Hentges.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Also present is Brad Davis, our planning manager. At the end of the podium, next to him is Rachel Nossbush, the deputy clerk to the board. In the audience is Marty Schmidt, our zoning administrator, Greg Wagner, our principal planner, Nathan Hall, our associate planner, and Tom Wolfe, our county commissioner. We'll start out the planning commission meeting with the approval of the April 14, 2025 meeting minutes. The commissioners have all been sent copies of the meeting minutes. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes as printed? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Commissioner Hentges.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Huber. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Our next item is the consent agenda. Open public hearing to consider the consent agenda. All items listed are considered by the planning commission to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a planning commission board member or a member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately. We have one item on the consent agenda this evening. It's number PL 2025-31, a request to approve the rezoning of 18.25 acres from RR1C Rural Residential Reserve Cluster District to RR1 Rural Residential Reserve District. Mark Schroeder, applicant, and Alan J. Tupi and Aleen M. Tupi, no back, and Ronald A. Tupi, property owners, in section 21 of Cedar Lake Township. Would anyone like that removed from the consent agenda? Okay. This item will be considered then with consent agenda. I'd entertain a motion at this time to close the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda as written.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner Huber. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robbins. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that item has been approved. If you're here for that item, that's been approved by the board. Our next public hearing is number 2025-019, request to approve a conditional use permit amendment to construct an industrial accessory building over 50% of the size of the principal building, expand incorporated applicant and KTLM holders LLC, property owner, in section 21 of Louisville Township. And Marty Schmidt, our zoning administrator, will be making the staff report this evening. Good evening, Mr. Schmidt.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. If you recall, this item has been continued from last month's meetings. I'll be rather brief on my presentation here, but on the screen is a site location map for the two parcels that make up the property proposed for the conditional use permit amendment. Two parcels comprised of about two, two-and-a-half acres in size. They're located just to the east of Louisville Road and State Highway 169. They are zoned industrial I-1. Jump to, here's an aerial photo. Again, the two properties outlined in red. Louisville Road to the west, access to the property is from Louisville Road. Adjacent land uses include a commercial property to the north here that's currently vacant. Industrial property drews concrete here to the east and south. And on the west side of Highway 169 is Brian Rock Quarry, zoned industrial. Here's the site plan for the property. Applicant received a conditional use permit a number of years... of years ago to locate his contracting business on this property. Also received approval to lease space within the principal building to other industrial type users. Currently there are two users within that building. One of them is Deals Auto, and that's one we have the compliance issue with. The primary building's about 12,000 square feet in area. The applicant's proposing to put up an accessory building down here, a little bit further to the south. Accessory building would be approximately 10,000 square feet. Right now, it's being put up as a cold storage building for trailers, equipment used in his own business. Could also be some of the renters within the building storing items within that building. This is elevations of the building he's proposing to put up. It is consistent with other industrial buildings within the area, so it will not look out of place. What you're looking at now are some photos that our code enforcement officer took of the cars at Deals Auto earlier today. Deals was down per our code enforcement officer, I believe he said, to 32 cars. So we're getting closer to the 25 that they're allowed through their certificate of compliance. The owner of Deals did indicate that he had four more going out here rather quickly. So then he'll get down to 28. We're still not at 25, but we're getting closer. It's my understanding that the owner of Deals is here today, if you have any questions for that individual. The township did recommend approval of this request back at their April meeting. They heard it again at their May meeting, and they did recommend approval once again. However, they had an additional condition that they wanted included with the permit. So we have updated conditions from what was in your planning report. It should have been in your folders at your desk here earlier. So the new conditions for this permit are conditions 11 through 14. Condition 11 essentially just says that the applicant has to combine the two parcels into one and bring Deals into compliance with their certificate of compliance prior to a building permit being issued for the accessory building. Condition number 12, that's the condition that the township recommended that we include, and that condition essentially says that the cold storage building couldn't be leased as a use in and of itself. An individual that stores stuff within the cold storage building would have to be leasing space in the principal building in order for it to be accessory. So we included that condition that the township planner had drafted. Condition 13 essentially just is more of a reminder than anything else. The existing setback system is sized for 100 gallons per day or six employees. There isn't a lot of room out there to expand that, so we felt it was important to add as a condition. And then condition 14 was at the request of our natural resources engineer. The building will increase runoff here slightly as we are putting the building over an existing gravel surface storage area. So she is recommending that 10-foot vegetative buffer be maintained on the south and east property lines. With that, I will stand for any questions.
Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, Marty, I just have one. The owner is of the property, the person that has the conditional use permit is Jess, is Jess Modine? Is that how you pronounce it?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Henches, it's Jess Modine.
Modine, alright. But who is running the operation with all the cars?
That would be.
That's a tenant of his?
Yes, that's a tenant of his. It's Deals Auto.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner? Yes. So Marty, let me get this straight. There are a little more than 25 cars now, but it's come down. So there's been progress made. Is it your idea that by the time that the commissioners vote on this, that he will be down to 25 cars?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Robbins, I would love to see that. We do have the item scheduled on the May 20th Board Meeting. However, we do have a condition built into the permit that essentially says you're not getting a building permit for your accessory structure until you're in compliance with the certificate of compliance for the number of cars here. So even if he isn't in compliance by May 20th, when it goes to the county board, he would have to be in compliance before we issue a permit to do any type of expansion out here.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, is Mr. Modine here? Modine here?
He is not. I called him today thinking he was going to be here today. He is on business in Nevada. So the owner of Deals Auto is here today.
I'd love to have him take the podium for a minute.
Alright.
Sir, there's a little sign in right over next to you there that you can send in. Please start with your name, so you introduce yourself.
My name is Louis Rotemo.
Thank you, Louis.
I didn't hear that.
Louis Rotemo.
Thank you. I just have one question for you.
Sure.
You haven't been enthusiastically complying with the conditional use permit forever. You've always had a lot more cars than you're supposed to have.
Yes.
Please tell me why you're gonna, I know you can get into compliance so that we can pass this. That's not a very big hurdle to get over. My question to you is, you need to make me feel like you're gonna stay in compliance, and you aren't just gonna clean it up so that you get this permit put through and then go back to having 80 cars there.
Yes, I understand your concern, and it is a legitimate one. The reason I have been like that, I've had some staffing issues and I've really worked hard to bring it down from where we were before. And I was here actually to let you know that we're down to about 27. The four that I had to get out, I did get out. I met with, I believe it was Tim earlier today, and we've been constant in touch with him. And I like to stay in compliance because even from a mental sense, it is actually very relieving. So I wouldn't want to be out of compliance. I mean, it's to my advantage too, to make sure I'm within so that at least my operation runs smoothly. So I don't see any benefit whatsoever from me to just clean up and go back to having, you know, all those vehicles there. It doesn't, actually, I think it hurts me as well. So that's what I've come through, is it does free up a whole lot of mental real estate here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for coming in. Do you have any other questions?
Okay, thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
I've got one more. Both questions tonight.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, is anybody, oh, Louisville Township. Is Louisville, yep, there you are. Is Louisville Township okay with this now? Because I, last meeting, I was sensing some on your part. And now we've had some changes made. I would like to know that you are okay with this.
John Waxman, Louisville Township. We've been going through this for the last couple of years, and it's never been getting down there. I went down there this morning. The gate is locked, so I couldn't go in and count them. And there was six cars sitting by the fence on the north side, saw it up there. We're bringing them in, taking them out, whatever. I know. Tim was there counting them sometime after I was there. I don't know. But we've been going through this for the last couple of years, and it's never been settled. I mean, I hate to get on the county compliance officer, oh, we're telling them to reduce it. It never happens.
Do you feel like this meeting, where we got tough and sad, has got to change?
Yeah.
And it's got to stay changed? Do you feel confident that at least a huge effort will be made to have that happen?
Like I say, I heard the story for two years, so I tend not to believe it. But I, there's gotta be some restrictions on them to make them come into compliance. I don't know how that can be, because the lawyers for this county don't want to get into this small stuff. And it just gets put off month after month.
Well, they can't come, they can't get issued a building permit if we pass this, until they're in compliance.
Like I say, they're not down there right now.
Right.
And I went down there to count them this morning. The gate's locked, so I couldn't get in.
Sure.
And that's play the game we do.
Right.
So, okay, thanks.
Thank you, John. Any other questions? Commissioner Watson?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm kind of still struggling over this cold storage building. I mean, I'm still baffled by the fact that we're gonna put up a building, spend some money on it, we're not gonna put a concrete floor in or any kind of drainage issues. It just, it doesn't have the right kind of smell right now for me. And I would have wished Mr. Modine would have been here today to kind of clarify that issue. I know the frustration with Louisville Township Board. I understand the gentleman with the cars is probably gonna work his butt off to get that taken care of. But I just, I'm just kind of a little concerned here about that building and.
This is a public hearing, I think you're still open here.
Bob Heaper, Louisville Township. We've been trying to come up with a way of, okay, what's gonna be the consequences if a year from now, everything's built and we go back to the same thing. As a township, we can't put any consequences on that. I don't know if the county can. So as John said, we're afraid that this is just gonna go back to however many he wants there again. Who can put the stipulations on, can it be written up in the, in your agreement there that if he goes over, a consequence would happen?
Yeah. Well, I know what you're getting at.
I don't know.
Yeah, and I think Marty wants to come up and talk about this, because I can see him walking towards the podium. And that is the challenge, is the ongoing part about this. And that's the concern, is even if you're coming within compliance, you know, to get the building permit, and then, you know, a month later, two months later, we come back three months later, and it's an ongoing problem with this. And we don't want to have that situation if possible.
We're to the point where, you know, we've kind of lost the trust in what he says to us.
Sure.
Because he said it so many times, we have a hard time believing that's exactly what he's gonna do.
Right.
So he has to earn that trust back from us.
So, couple thoughts, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, after listening to some of the discussion here. One, when it comes to the certificate of compliance and the conditional use permit that Mr. Modine has, obviously, he's gonna need to get in compliance by the time he gets a building permit for the accessory building. And a thought would be, is if this board wanted to direct staff, if Mr. Modine comes out of compliance again, that staff should bring the applicant back with the thought of possible revocation of his permit for non-compliance.
Absolutely.
Great idea.
And staff will follow up on that. So that sends a real strong message.
What I'm hearing from the commissioners here is that that would probably be a thing to do, because I think there's certainly the concern here, and we're hearing it from the township, who's been dealing with it for a while here. But, and I think that that's, you know, I think that's totally appropriate.
And to bring somebody back on a violation and a possible revocation of their permit, that's a huge step, and with really big consequences.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, all right, let's follow it for a minute. So you would suggest that if we were to pass this, that we have language in our motion speaking to that, or that we would be able to direct staff? And you said that you would go and look, how long, I mean, how long would this run? I mean, would you go back two years from now, one year? What kind of time limit are you talking about?
Before we bring something back for non-compliance. You know, we'd probably give the person a short period of time to get in compliance, and if they didn't, then we'd bring it back if it was one year, two years. Yes, that's right.
Isn't it pretty common for CUPs to do, set a one-year annual inspection on things? And then if they're not in compliance previous to that, you could bring them in earlier than that. So normally, there's a one-year, an ongoing thing for.
An ongoing.
Yes, it's ongoing.
And then, just so I'm clear, Mr. Chair, if he was out of compliance, even a year from now, then he would face a possible revocation.
Of the CUP.
Of the CUP, am I right?
Correct. Correct, Mr. Robbins.
Well, you know, I, like Mr. Watson, I'm kind of nervous about this, but I certainly, if I'm gonna approve this, would want that laying the agenda.
Yeah. Couple other thoughts on the building itself, as far as Commissioner Watson's question about the concrete floor. The building will have to meet building code. There's nothing in the zoning ordinance that requires a concrete floor for a commercial or industrial accessory building. So if the building code does require a concrete floor, he'll have to have that. It is my understanding from talking to one of the building officials that that's not in the code, but it will need to meet building code. And our natural resources engineer has reviewed the runoff from the property.
Just a quick question on that, Marty. Is there, is it dependent on what's in the building? I mean, the building code? And I'm wondering about that when the building official, you say that.
So, yeah, I mean, they're gonna have to tell us what the use of the building, and they're gonna use it for storage of trailers, vehicles, equipment, what you'd normally expect in a contractor yard situation.
Sure.
So they'll be looking at that, and they'll classify the building based on those types of storage.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone else like to make comment? I see Mr. Bob would like to make additional comment?
On the non-compliance issue, can the township initiate that and bring it to the code enforcement officer? And, or how, is it just dependent on the county checking in on it?
Yeah. Generally, well, I'll let Marty adjust it, but it is pretty more Marty, but I think.
Marty, show them condition number one.
Where was that? Last one.
There we go.
Condition number one.
Yeah.
Louisville Township Board may conduct an annual review of the business to ensure that they're in compliance with the conditions of the CUP.
Right.
So they can do an inspection. If they feel that the applicant is out of compliance and they want to direct us to, to look at possible revocation and bringing it back to that board.
Sure.
We'll certainly listen to that.
The answer would be technically yes. You can do that annually.
If he's out of compliance, can we ask him to get back into compliance as a township?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions at this time? Okay, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Some.
Second motion by Commissioner Robbins, second by Commissioner Pete. All in favor, vote aye. We'll entertain a motion for action on this at this time.
I think it'll be a little complicated.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, based on the criteria for approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the amendment, conditional use permit for Jess Modine to construct an industrial accessory building greater than 50% the size of the principal building, recognizing the, should this be non-compliance, which require a conditional use permit before the Planning Commission at a future date. Also, that the new conditions of approval as listed that we have before us today, 1 through 14, is now part of the motion. And that's the, actually, I have one more thought. I can't think of what. Oh, and the township has given their approval at this point.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Watson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robbins. Any further discussion before I call for a vote?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Robbins?
This is, it's the township, this has been going on for a long time. And, you know, so I'm gonna support this motion with the understanding that in the future, if anybody does, if the township or our staff finds him out of compliance, that he's facing a possible revocation of the permit. I want that to be made clear, and I think that the commissioners should know that when they see it. Under those circumstances, and I have some misgivings about this, but I will vote for that with those conditions.
Any further comments? Okay. I have a motion and a second for us. At this time, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Thank you very much for the staff and the information on this. Our next item. Our next item is number 2025-22, request to approve a preliminary plat of Brink Business Park consisting of three lots and 24.1 acres, Mezzan Brink Construction and Engineering Incorporated applicant and property owner in Section 1 of New Market Township. And Greg Wagner, our principal planner, will be making the staff report. Good evening, Mr. Wagner.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. If you don't mind, going back to the agenda, maybe, Mr. Chair, if you would also like to read the next item as well. The two projects are tied together, so I think what we'd like to do is present them both as one project, and then have you vote on them separately, if that would...
That's fine, that's fine. So, and I was wondering about that as I was chasing. And then, second part of this is the number 2025-023, request to approve a preliminary plat of Brink Business Park, second addition, consisting of 18 lots and one outlot on 79.69 acres, Mezzan Brink Construction and Engineering Incorporated applicant and property owner in, oh, I'm sorry, and River Valley Partners LLP property owner in Section...
You have to write, you hop down to the next one.
Okay.
Yep.
Switch to the next one? Oh, I'm sorry, nope. Applicant and property owner in Section 1 of New Market Township. There you go.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So I understand after Mr. Wagner's report, we will be opening public hearings on both of those items, is that right?
On both these items, yes.
Yep.
We're considering both items at the same time.
Yep, and we'll help, staff will help you.
We will address them with two separate motions.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, it'll just make it hopefully a little more clear with the presentation components of it. So I'll talk about the first proposal, and then we'll move into the second one. And then Representatives from Mezzan Brink are also here to add more to the presentation. So on the screen is the first proposal, the 24.11 acres located in Section 1 of New Market Township. So this property is located north of County Road 29. This is actually east of Interstate 35, east of Pillsbury Avenue, which is County Road 46. To the north is City of Lakeville, and to the east is Eureka Township in Dakota County. So here's the aerial photo of the subject property. You can see it is a mix of woodlands and open agricultural land on the southern portion of the site, mixed in with the wooded area. Our wetlands that will, I'll show on the site location map, or the project plans. The request before you for this property tonight was published as three rural business lots. However, since that information was sent out, the applicant has a proposed buyer for one of the lots, and that buyer needs more space. So on the agenda here is a revised preliminary plat. So if I scroll in, so instead of three lots on Brink Business Park, we're now going to be looking at two lots. So the north two lots are now proposed to be combined into one larger lot consisting of 15 acres. And the southern lot will, is like 6.69 acres. So instead of three lots, we're now looking at just two lots for the initial Brink Business Park. So just to bring the Commission up to speed on kind of the history of this area, this was an area that had previously been identified as a potential growth area for City of Lakeville. That land use decision changed with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, which was adopted in 2019. So when we went through the process of updating the Comprehensive Plan, meeting with the City of Lakeville, their information to the county back then is that they did not have capacity or desire to extend services into Scott County. So this area, which previously was under urban expansion and urban business reserve, was re-guided to the rural business reserve. So that change was made in 2019, mainly due to the land uses that are around it. Okay, my map works here. So this is our, kind of our GIS map. So the property is right here. To the north is City of Lakeville, and you can see there's a lot of rural-type contractor, you know, industrial, commercial uses that have outdoor storage to the, kind of to the north, north-northeast. I believe this is a large FedEx facility, Air Lake, Lakeville Industrial Development is just off the screen. So this is kind of an area that has historically been developed as commercial-industrial, and as the City of Lakeville kind of grows into this area, that is what the City of Lakeville has this area guided for. So the proposed use is consistent with the adjacent land uses here. So again, two lots proposed on this 24 acres. Okay. So this is the overall grading plan for the site. And as I mentioned on the initial site location map, if you remember, the southern portion of the property is wooded, and this now, the colored areas, those are delineated wetlands. So kind of hidden within those tree areas are wetland areas that were delineated. So the north portion of the site, and again, these two lots will be combined, so there'll just be one building pad. But the north area of the site is more of where that open agricultural land is. The south area of the site, while it's a 6.69 acre parcel, the building site is actually significantly smaller. And as we zoom into that area, you can see it's really just area for a building. Septic sites are off to the west of the property, or west side of the property, and then some area for parking, mainly around the building. As the Commissioners are generally familiar with, you know, for reviewing lots, we look at where the building's located, making sure that they have adequate wastewater treatment, but then also adequate stormwater management. So proposed here is around the north, and west side of the lower building is a filtration basin. The wetland areas on the site, any delineated wetlands are protected. There's a protective buffer that will be placed within easement, conservation easement. And then this is the northern end of the site, so this is also another filtration basin that will be constructed to capture all the runoff stormwater from the property. I'll just end the first phase of this presentation noting that the New Market Township Board did recommend approval, subject to getting approval from the Planning Commission. This was heard at their April 1st, 2025 meeting. It was noted that they had no concerns with the plans on April 1st, with need for a development agreement and escrow to be placed with the township prior to final approval. Since the township recommendation, the township attorney has drafted a three-way development agreement between the developer, township, and county. That is currently under review by the County Attorney's Office and Scott County Transportation. But as you can see here, and the town, I should say, the township did execute or authorize approval of the agreement at their meeting last week. Okay, so that was the first project. Now moving...
Mr. Chair, Professor Huber.
Greg, as far as, will you make a motion on that first one? Should we say two lots or three lots? Because it's three.
Two lots.
I'll do two, okay.
Yeah, two. And we will, we will help you with that. So staff will be here to answer.
Thank you.
So now, moving to the second request before the Commission tonight as part of this development, Brink Business Park, second addition. So this is the 80-acre parcel identified here in red. The first addition is the 24 acres here. This is now the property on the east side of Lyndale Avenue, north of County Road 29, which is 225th Street, and again, south of Lakeville, and Eureka Township is to the east. I should note that 225th Street is County Road 29 in Scott County, and as it goes into Dakota County, it is County Road 74. So it is a paved Dakota County road. So you can see this site is largely open agricultural land, largely crop land. There were trees along this drainage way here. A lot of those have been removed. That is at the discretion of the property owner. The county does not have, the county does not regulate tree removal on private property. So the property owner, developer, did remove most or all of those trees a couple months ago. But that was at their risk as they proceeded forward with the development here. As noted, the property is in the Rural Business Reserve zoning district, which does allow two and a half acre minimum lot sizes. So what's being proposed for this property is developing it into up to 18 rural industrial lots. The developer proposes to construct a new local township road into the property, as shown here on the preliminary plat. And then they have nine lots on the north side, and nine lots essentially on the south side. The drainage way that is cutting through the property, we'll talk a little bit more about here coming up. And I should note that the developer's consultant, Jennifer Haskamp, is here, and she'll have a short presentation after I'm done, which will kind of talk more about the environmental component of this review. But essentially, the developer is proposing and showing, you know, the lots all meet minimum lot size, minimum width. They're showing the primary and alternate septic site on each lot. As I go to the overall grading plan here, you can see on each lot, they're showing a proposed 5,000-square-foot building pad, which is the minimum required by the county septic ordinance to show. And then again, two 5,000-square-foot septic drain field sites on each lot. The area highlighted in yellow and green here, along that tributary, those are the delineated wetland areas. So the wetland delineation was done last fall. What I want to note is that the tributary, normally when we come before this commission, we're talking about a DNR-protected water. This tributary goes to the Vermillion River. It actually is a tributary protected under the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. So the applicant and developer had to deal with the U.S. Army Corps, which is a little more extensive than normal, but Jennifer will talk a little bit more about that process. So just kind of giving you a general layout of what's happening here, we have the two lots on the west side of the road. There's drainage coming into this wetland complex here. The applicants are now proposing on this side to deal with stormwater, they're proposing four infiltration basins. So there's an infiltration basin right here. There's a second basin, I believe, right here, and then there's one here, and then a very large basin on the far eastern end. The road will end in a temporary cul-de-sac. They're building essentially what they need. And then they're proposing to dedicate a public road easement to the east property line. So the east property line is the border between Scott and Dakota County. There is a large agricultural property in, on the Dakota County side, in Eureka Township, under their jurisdiction. If that should develop someday, we do, we're preserving that road corridor for that future road extension. Jennifer will get probably a little more into this, but with the Army Corps process, the Army Corps did issue a permit for a crossing. So lots eight and nine of Block 2, there will be a box culvert installed right here that will provide a 30-foot-wide driveway access. And then there's another crossing over here. Also, I believe in the U.S. Army Corps, oh, here's their, here's their letter. So this is dated March 26 from the Army Corps of Engineers. So this permit talks about permanent discharge of fill material for .15 acres of wetland for the placement of one culvert road crossing, which would be that future road crossing, and then .02 acres for the purpose of placing two box culverts. So this permit was issued by the Army Corps, March 26, after a very extensive process. And so this is the documentation that was included there, and then this is an exhibit from that Army Corps permit that talks about where those box culvert crossings are located. So that has all been permitted through the Army Corps. There was some wetland replacement because there is impact to the wetland area. That has also been addressed through a wetland replacement plan. It's just a little over 6,000 square feet of replacement. So the applicant is buying credits to that. Those credits are coming from Dakota County and the Vermillion watershed. So that purchase has actually already been made. And as noted, this is the same recommendation. The township did recommend approval, and as I said, we do have a development agreement that is currently being reviewed, but was authorized by the township last week. What I'm going to do is switch over, and Jennifer will come up and kind of give you a little bit more background on the environmental review, and then she and I will stand for any questions.
Thank you very much. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. So actually, Greg covered quite a bit of the information that's in my presentation, so I won't belabor it. But this one actually does have a fairly long history from the environmental perspective. And so because of the size and scale of the project, it actually tripped the mandatory EAW process, so an environmental assessment worksheet was completed for this project. That process actually took place for the majority of last year. So as part of that process, our firm put together the EAW. We worked with the county through the review process before it was published for the 30-day public comment period. So as part of that process, we did consider both the east and the west side of Lyndale, so both parcels were incorporated into that project and into that EAW. From that perspective, what we do during the EAW process, for those of you that aren't familiar with that timeline, or sort of what you do, it's a concept essentially. So it looks very much like the preliminary plats that are in front of you this evening. However, they're concepts, and what we attempt to do is essentially max out the development potential of it, and then determine, are there environmental impacts that cannot be properly mitigated for through the permitting process? And so, excuse me, so that is what we went through. The EAW does include 18, I would call it substantive items. There are actually 22 items on that EAW worksheet. That process does include an address, land use, water, wastewater, surface water, air, noise, traffic, excuse me, and greenhouse gases, which is a new item. I also have allergies, just like the rest of you. I'm sorry. Excuse me. So, and as part of that process, then we also are required at the end during that public comment period, that it must be reviewed by all the agencies. And so we did, in this case, have to go to the DNR, the township, the county, the Army Corps of Engineer, and pretty much everybody who has anything to say about anything environmental-related. So during that review process, we did receive, if my memory is right, I think we received six or seven comments during that process, which did include the DNR. Thank you. It did include the DNR. We received a response from them, the Met Council, and various other agencies that provided us comment. So this is just a brief overview of the timeline to give you a sense of how long this has been going, and Greg's anecdote about dealing with the Army Corps taking maybe just a little bit longer is quite funny, because that was quite the debate in terms of how we were going to address the stream, the ditch, the tributary, the ephemeral stream, the, I think it's been named just about everything at this, at this stage of... the ephemeral stream, the, I think it's been named just about everything at this, at this stage of the game in terms of what that waterway really is and who had jurisdiction over it. So that process actually required quite a bit of back and forth with the Army Corps. It also included the Scott County, Washington, your water body, wetland authority, and quite a debate of what is it? And then what are all those wetlands around it? What can we do to it? What can't we do to it? And ultimately arrived at the decision of, we're doing nothing to it. It is going to be maintained, which is why you see the preliminary plat the way that it is. So in terms of the overall timeline, what I would note is that there was a 30-day public comment period that occurred in July to August of last year. Once that public comment period closed, we did what was called the findings of fact in record of decision. During that time, that package gets delivered to the county board. They accept it, they issue their NOD, it's called their notice of decision. And essentially, they concluded that there were no significant environmental impacts that could not be properly mitigated through the permitting process, which is how then we essentially ended up here this evening and able to move forward. So you've seen these two preliminary plats. I bring them up just to note that these are essentially prepared in response to what we saw and heard during that concept plan EAW phase. So the goal of actually your preliminary plat is to respond to the comments that you received during that EAW process, incorporate them into the EAW, or incorporate them into your submission. And so you're properly mitigating for the, the environmental impacts that you've identified during that EAW process. So some of the key findings that came out of that EAW were obviously the stream, the ditch, the tributary, the whatever you want to call it, waterway. That was a key finding in terms of how do we address that? And how does that get properly protected through the preliminary plat and the plat process? And so the EAW said basically, it's there, we know it's there, we had the delineation. How are we then going to address it as part of the development and, and the preliminary plat? How do we properly protect it? And if we're not going to protect it, or if there are encroachments, how do we go through that mitigation process and what does that look like? That process identified the fact that the Army Corps of Engineers was going to take jurisdiction over it. And as a result of that, we were forced into this dialogue, if you will, to try to figure out exactly the best way to address it and incorporate it within the project. So all rules at that point went into effect with respect to replacement, rerouting crossings or impacts. And so obviously, what you see before you this evening is as minimal impact as possible that we could take in order to cross it, except, you know, access the developable portions of the site while maintaining and protecting that waterway. So the other piece that came out of that was obviously pretty extensive surface and stormwater management because obviously we are changing what's going on out there in terms of impervious surfaces. So we needed to do quite a bit with respect to that surface and stormwater management process. And then how does that connect or not connect in certain areas to what those, you know, natural resource components were, the wetland delineation and that stream and tributary that's identified on the south end of the site? Finally, there were some transportation items that were noted within the EAW. Those did make their way then obviously into what you're looking at this evening with respect to the improvements for turn lanes, et cetera. And then also the improvement that's necessary for Lyndale Avenue. So this process did respond to that, those EAW items or key findings and address the mitigation or the steps that we set through the permitting of how, how to take care of that. So this is a typo. It's a, it appears that there's much more wetland being impacted based on my commas or an extra zero, depending on how you look at it. It's about 6,500 square feet of wetland on the, on the west parcel that would be impacted. That is subject to mitigation and replacement. The Messenbrinks have already purchased those wetland credits to meet that mitigation that is required. The Army Corps of Engineers, as I stated, did take jurisdiction over that waterway. So as a result of it, we did go through that permitting process, which Greg identified up on the screen in terms of the proper permits. There are some conditions within that permit that we still need to follow and maintain as we develop the site. And so that will be in ongoing communication to ensure that we're in compliance with that permit. And then the turn lanes were identified and then also the paving. And so those are all identified within your preliminary plat package this evening. So that, that's an overview of the EAW process. It did conclude last year. So obviously, I'm happy to answer any questions, although I don't have it memorized because it was a few months, months ago, but I will do my best.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Robbins.
Yeah, so I'm just going to say what you just did. The EAW is done. Whoever had to approve it has approved, is that right?
That is correct.
When you talk about a wetland credit or a bonus, would you explain that? Because I always kind of think of that as, well, you have to bring, you have to go and buy some more land? Or is it a credit? What is a wetland credit?
So it is actually a wetland area in another location or site. It has to be within the same sub watershed because essentially they're looking at volumes. So it protects that additional land in another location offsite. And so you purchase them and you pay for it and it protects an equivalent amount or one and a half times the amount of your disturbed area, essentially. So it gives it a dollar amount per square foot, essentially. And oftentimes it is about, you know, the replacement is one, one and a half times whatever you are disrupting or impacting. And then that protects it in another location within that.
So if you, if you, if two acres of land or one acre of wet wood, wetland is, is gone, then this credit buys one acre somewhere else, is that right?
Correct. But it has to be within the same watershed, if you will, because what they're doing is trying to maintain the same amount of volume or water in that same sub watershed. So you have to buy it in certain areas to make sure that your replacement is actually within the area in which you're impacting.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very helpful. And this is, I'll continue.
No, I'm just going to flip back to the site map, sorry.
Did you want to end?
No, just to kind of echo what Jennifer said. So the, the replacement credit, so in this case, she mentioned the same watershed. So here, we're in the Vermillion River watershed. And we have the sign off from Vermillion Rivers, River and Dakota County. So they've already approved it, the purchase.
Are there any further questions for Mr. Wager at this time? Okay, this is a public hearing. If you'd like to make comment, just step up to the podium. There's a signup sheet next to the podium and then please start with your name.
If you can just state for the record that you've opened a public hearing for both of those applications, please state that for the record.
Okay, this is the public hearing for both of the applications that are before us this time.
Hi, my name is Christina Stiles. I live on 225th Street to the east of the property that they're referring to. So I received a notice that this was going to be happening. She keeps, they keep referring to last year, there was a public, when the EAW, they put it to the public. We were not informed as property owners, so that's a little bit of a concern. Our concern is traffic on 225th Street. We are in Dakota County. If you continue down 225th Street, it merges with Dodd Boulevard, which is an extremely busy thoroughfare. And our road is already, that intersection is crazy. So for people to come out onto there to go left or right, if you're inputting this many lots and this many more people that are going to be coming and going to and from work, that's going to be a huge concern. I know they had addressed that Lyndale will be blacktopped, but Lyndale ends at a dirt road. That's a little tiny road that goes by, you know, a recycling place. So that doesn't really get people to where they're going to need to go. So they're going to be coming out to 225th Street, either going east or west. To the west, there is a roundabout, which does help. But on our, on the Dodd end, there is not. I realize that's Dakota County, but this needs to be addressed.
Okay.
So that is a concern. Another concern is there is a very similar site that is, was, I believe, purchased by the same owners down further south. And the light is crazy. We are two miles north of it and we can see the lights blazing at night. So that is a concern too. Just the whole area will be lit up like, you know, because it is an industrial area. So those are just our concerns as a neighbor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Peggy Madden, I'm her sister. And our family farm is actually right across the road. And I didn't get a letter. I called today about that. My property is 198 feet across the road from the hullet land, which is what this is. And I was a little disturbed to think that I didn't get a letter when I'm one of the closest neighbors. Traffic, excuse me, allergies. We want to know seriously, where are the turn lanes going to be? How is this going to affect us? I have, from the Dakota County line, my land starts at 198 feet of road front to approximately 1,600. My 27 acres is quite a bit of road front. Are, is the road going to be widened? Is Scott County going to come in and Dakota County is going to have to widen the road because of the turn lanes? And you know, you can say, oh, there's a lot of traffic. One day, I couldn't get out of my driveway because there were 15 Lakeville school buses that came by. I had to run out quick and get my mail another day because there's so much traffic both ways. You, we went from a gravel road and in 1990, I think it was paved. And oh, it is 74A, not just 74, our road. It's crazy. People go like crazy all the time. County Road 70 has stoplights, our road has none. And we do get, I would say, 95% of the school bus traffic coming from Lakeville back to the school bus garage that's up on 46. I don't think if you live there, and you don't live there, you don't realize how bad it is. And you're going to put so much more traffic with how many businesses? 18, 20 businesses in there? And you say the wastewater is going to go into these little ponds? In Dakota County, our sewer systems in the country have to be mound systems. You're talking about a wet water area with a Vermillion River tributary going through it. And I, I just can't see how this 20 businesses are going to have septic and you're going to be able to have room for drain fields and stuff that it's not going to overflow and get into the water and get into the wastewater, get into the ditch, get into our land, get into our properties? It's, it's a big concern. And you know, you can say, yes, there is business out there, but there's also farms. Our farm is approximately 100 acres. The farm right next to this land is 140 acres. And yes, he might sell it someday, but he hasn't. You know, the farms next to me, we're, we're not just a little industry area. We are also a farming agricultural area. And basically, we're losing a lot of that. And I think some of these changes are not good. And I do think that you need to also be concerned about the people who live there. This isn't just a little, oh, this is nice to have industry. When our field road is the Dakota Scott County line. And I just think you need to have a lot more consideration. And really, I would like to have known about the environmental study also. You know, we're in the book. You can get our tax records from Dakota County and send us letters. They send us letters all the time. So thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Just a couple of things to address there, Greg. Do you think you could?
Sure.
Address particularly the septic systems and the road improvements, what's happening with the road improvements as they go into County 74A in Dakota County?
Yep. So Mr. Chair Commissioners, this was included in your packet, it wasn't in the presentation. But when the environmental review went out last July and August for adjacent agency and public, public comment review. So this was from Scott Peters with Dakota County Transportation. Noted in the highlight there that after a review of the preliminary plat, Dakota County Transportation staff has determined that sufficient highway capacity will be available on Dakota County highways to accommodate the trips generated by the proposal within Scott County. So this was last August. We sent the, when we received the application, we sent the application material to, on, on April 4th, we sent it to Dakota County, Eureka Township and City of Lakeville for review and comment. And Mr. Peters simply responded back in an email that Dakota County's comments from the EAW still stand. So there were no reported issues or concern from Dakota County Transportation with the capacity of their county road, so pertaining to that. So then, so the turn lanes, turn lanes on this plan are the gray highlighted areas here. So there'll be a right turn lane for westbound traffic going on to Lyndale. And then there will be a eastbound bypass lane constructed on the south part of County Road 29. And then as Jennifer alluded to and the, the neighbors, the New Market Township has required Lyndale Avenue to be paved just north of the new proposed road. So it will be paved to this point here. And then, yes, further north of there, it is gravel going into City of Lakeville. But it's anticipated as land to the north would develop then over the, over time, then the rest of it will get improved as well. I spoke to, sorry, spoke to Ms. Madden this morning. So we, Scott County, used Dakota County's tax system to pull names and addresses. So her name, her property, which is across the street, was pulled, but her mailing address is in City of Savage.
That's the wrong man.
So the, this information was pulled from Dakota County tax records. So we went based on the information we had, or we were provided by Dakota County.
That's another sister.
Oh, okay. As far as storm, stormwater. So as indicated, the proposal here uses filtration and infiltration basins. As many of the commissioners are aware, the county and state requirements for stormwater management are actually requiring them to manage the rate and volume control to pre-settlement standards. So currently, it's farm field, which has a higher runoff than when it was native prairie grass 200 years ago. So they actually have to design a system that would accommodate stormwater from when this area was pre-development. So there was no farm field here, there was just prairie grass. So, which is a very restrictive rate and volume control. So that's likely why this pond on the far east end or that infiltration basin on the far east end is very large. So they're capturing all the, all the, the surface water runoff from the new road, from the new hard surfaces, and directing them into that series of infiltration basins and the goals that that water infiltrates into the ground. And then as far as septic goes, I know Ms. Madden, I spoke with her this morning and she talked about mound systems. So the simple answer there is all of these septic sites had preliminary soils testing done for the development. As the lots are sold, the purchasers of each lot would then have to have a septic system designed specifically for their use and for their water usage. And at that time, they have to get a septic permit from Scott County Environmental Services. That septic permit would have soil borings that show the presence of the water table. If they have the low water table, they can get an in-ground system. If the water table is near the surface, then you have to elevate that septic and that's when you get a mound. So some of these, or majority likely will be mounds, but that would not be determined until the permits are actually applied for. I think that was it.
In the traffic question, I imagine looking at where this development is, that the anticipation is that most traffic would come off of County 46 across 29 into this development. Isn't that kind of what the traffic engineers would look at this and say?
Yeah, Mr. Chair Commissioners, so the- So, the site is located, you know, right here. Pillsbury does eventually connect up to County Road 50, I believe, in, in City of Lakeville, which is an interchange. So, yes, some traffic would exit the development, take a right, take a right, and go up to the interstate. Other traffic, depending if they have business in Dakota County, would take County Road 74A east to Dodd, which would take them into City of Lakeville that way.
That's 70, that's the intersection at 70.
70, I'm sorry. Yep, yep. So, it is a series of, other than Lindale, it's county roads, both in Scott and Dakota County, that are designed for this capacity.
She is correct. That intersection at 70 and to 25th is, is not really set up for like the other one. So, the other one's a much better intersection than roundabout. But that's just.
That's in Dakota County though, right?
That's in Dakota County.
Yeah, okay.
Are there any other questions or anyone wanting to make comment this time?
Mr. Chair, just quickly. Greg, can you talk a bit about, this is the history now, but the Brink Business Park we put together, which is further, further south? Have we had any issues associated with traffic problems such as accidents and things of that nature?
Sure. Mr. Chair Commissioner Watson, I can't speak to any known traffic incidents or significant accidents. We did get, or I personally did get a call last week, I believe, from an adjacent neighbor indicating one of, one of the tenants of that industrial park does automotive repair and was using the county road for driving cars for testing. Unfortunately, it is a public street, so we can't prohibit driving on the public road. But, but to, to the point, and to the point with lights, we cannot eliminate, you know, develop, lights from development, be it commercial, industrial development, or residential development. But pertaining to Fieldstone, when that initially went in, they had a berm along the county road, but due to a stormwater pond, there was a dip in that berm. And I believe it was a trucking operation went in and had a light that was pointing north at one of the neighbor's houses. That person, this was a couple of months after they went in, they called us. We reached out, Justin from Messenbrink is here. We reached out to Justin and John at Messenbrink. And within a day, they went out and realigned that light so that it wasn't shining across. So, they're, they're very responsive to doing what they can to deal with what they can. But just ambient light from the development, you know, that's going to happen as this area continues to grow.
With that previous business park, we spent long, long time, hours, meetings discussing that traffic flow and how it would work because of the density of the housing in and around the area. So, that's my question. And I haven't, you know, seen or heard anything since. But yes, there is concerns always with traffic. But we try to do our due diligence as best we possibly can to make sure that the public is safe. And although it, it seems like there's just a tremendous amount of traffic going up and down the road, it somehow works its way out. I do have a question for Brink representative, representative, would you go please? No, gentleman with the baseball hat on? It's my understanding, and when we put these business parks together, that we put lighting in, they're downward facing lighting. Can you address the issue associated with the, what you're talking about?
Yeah, Justin Ball, Messenbrink Construction. Yes, we do put downward casted lighting in. We have, actually in Fieldstone, no light poles anywhere on the whole site. They are all attached to the buildings, and they are all downward shaded. We actually been out in Fieldstone when there was the complaint. We just actually hooded the whole thing and shot it straight down to stop it from going out in the yard. As Greg said, I mean, you're going to have ambient light around. All of these projects get a, all engineered, all done. You have light packages designed to shine no foot candles outside the property lines.
Mr. Chair, is that light on 24/7? Is there a light on 24/7?
At night, yeah. They're on photo wise, turn on at night, security lights.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any more comments at this time? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hanses, second by Commissioner Huber. All in favor, vote aye. We have two motions to consider at this point before us. And I would, can we have a discussion first?
Yeah, just a discussion. You know, we, I think we try, or at least are cognizant about the people who live in our county. I think one of the things that, that we come under is that, you know, we're a planning commission, and we have to, we have to uphold the zoning code. So, when there's something that's, that people object to, we can't just change the zoning code. I appreciate what those two women said. And I think that the discussion that we've had has highlighted some of those things. We've heard from the developer. We've heard from the consultant. I mean, they understand what the difficulties are. And I guess I think that going forward, that, that everybody involved in this will do the best they can to make sure that those two residents at least feel like they've been listened to and that they've been responded. And whatever can happen is, is, you know, it's to your advantage to make it happen.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate Mr. Wagoness' response in throwing us and following up on the notification issue on that as well. And I would just add that it's always difficult when we have a roadway that we're very close to the county line. And it goes into another county and another jurisdiction with that. So, that's a challenge.
Mr. Chair, can I make a motion?
Absolutely.
Based on criteria for approval, this is a staff report. I recommend approval of the preliminary plat of Brink Business Park consisting of two lots on 24.11 acres, noting that this recommendation is subject to the conditions of approval listed in the staff report to be satisfied prior to the county board consideration of the plat and noting that the town board has recommended approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Huber, a second by Commissioner Robbins. Any further discussion before I call for a vote on this motion? Hearing none. I'll entertain, all in favor, vote aye. opposed, motion passes. This time, we have a second motion regarding this public hearing.
Mr. Chair, based on the criteria for approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the preliminary plat for Brink Business Park second addition consisting of 18 lots and one outlaw on 79.69 acres, noting this recommendation is subject to the conditions of approval listed in the staff report to be satisfied prior to county board consideration of that plat.
I have a motion by Commissioner Robbins, second. Second by Commissioner Huber. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
I'd like to note that the town board also recommended approval.
Friendly amendment?
That's friendly amendment.
Adding that in, I'll call for a motion. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much, everyone, for your input this evening. And thank you to staff for their work on this project as well. Our next item before us this evening is a request to improve an interim use permit amendment for private day park to allow private events and annual cannabis event servers from Corn Maze LLC, applicant, and River Valley Partners LLP, property in Section 21 of Louisville Township. And Mr. Wagon will be making the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Chair Commissioners. So, I'll introduce the project, and then I think Mitch Michelson from Severs is here to kind of give you an overview of what they're going to be requesting. But just so the, the board is, or the commissioner is familiar, the property, as you noted, is located in Sections 33 and 34 of Louisville Township. So, the property is located on the east side of US Highway 169, the south side of County Road 14, and their entrance is just across from Louisville Road, which is a township road. So, Severs received an interim use permit in 2019 to operate a private day park. They relocated their corn maze operation, their fall festival, from City of Shakopee to this site and have been operating their fall festival and a winter drive-through light show for the last six or seven years. They've expanded or intensified what they've been doing out here. Like I said, they've, they've added the winter light show. And then last year, added a doobie dabbler event, which was during their fall festival timeframe, but was a hemp or cannabis-based festival. And I'll let Mitch explain a little bit more about that. What they're requesting tonight is to formally amend the IUP to add the temporary cannabis event as a annual event. But then also to amend the IUP to allow them to lease out to private, private businesses, private groups, organizations that would like to use their site for, for those private events. Typically, that would occur during the fall festival, and I think Mitch can talk a little bit more about that. Just wanted to give you a quick overview. This is a more recent aerial photo, just kind of of their site. The parking lot for their fall festival is located on the eastern side. The corn maze area is also on the eastern side. So, they, they try and put the more passive event uses up against the residential properties that are located to the east of the site. So, you can see the corn maze, the parking, and then they have temporary tents and other amenities throughout the site that they set up each year for their fall festival event. I think if Mitch is ready, I'll have him come up and he'll kind of go through what they're proposing to do as far as the two-day cannabis event and then the private events. And Mitch, I do have your narratives here and your other site plans that you just scrolled down.
So, yeah, good evening, Commissioner and Commissioners. Mitch Michelson with the Peterson family and Severs Fall Festival and Festivals. As Greg alluded to, we had been operating adjacent to Canterbury Park for 20 years. And with some development in that area needed to move. And so, in the winter of 2019, purchased this property and went through the, the process of getting an IUP to operate both our, our fall festival and kind of a winter festival light show, which has taken off and, and been a nice ancillary business for us as well. You know, of course, when we, when we first went through the process in 2019, we did the best we could to foresee kind of, you know, all the opportunities that would be available to us with this move, with owning the property, you know, having a little bit more of a permanent home, so to speak. But, you know, coming off of our, our fifth year and going into our sixth year, which was, was last year, and specifically speaking to, you know, the, the, I guess, the, the climate in Minnesota with the cannabis market, you know, we thought there's an opportunity here with the infrastructure we have in, in place and with our expertise on hosting events on this location to host a temporary cannabis adult-themed event. It just so happens that, you know, through, kind of working through this process and thinking through that, a gentleman who's here tonight, and, and I'll introduce in a minute, who has, has done this for many years with beer and operated the beer dabblers throughout the metro area, contacted us and said, hey, you know, you guys are, you know, a family that's interested in this. You're, you're in this space. You know, I have some expertise hosting 21-plus events in the beer space. You know, I think we could collaborate and make something work. And, and so, we started talking, kind of understanding how things could, could work out. Last year, we did come to the county and kind of say, hey, this is, this is kind of what we're thinking. The, you know, although the cannabis law had been passed, the, the state was still really in its infancy as far as how things were progressing. And there wasn't any true definition quite yet as to, you know, how, what things looked like. We certainly are further along now and getting closer to understanding more what that is going to look like rolling out. But back to my point earlier, you know, you know, working with, with Matt Kennivan and, and the beer dabbler, just kind of forming this, this team using, you know, their expertise on the 21-plus side, of course, using our expertise and our space to, you know, kind of hatch this plan to say, hey, I, I think this could be a good location to host a temporary or a, a two-day cannabis adult-themed event. In going through some of the, the process with both the township and the county, you know, kind of, I would say, on a trial basis, it was, you know, concluded that, yeah, you know, this, this seems like something that you guys can go ahead and do. So, last September, the, the weekend before, we opened our fall, our family fall festival. We did host kind of an inaugural, what we're calling the Doobie Dabbler. And it was a huge success, both from a patron standpoint, from a vendor standpoint. Really, the people that came enjoyed themselves. It went very smoothly. We had sheriff's deputies on site. They've also commented that from their perspective, things went quite smoothly. And just in general, it, it went quite well. I think the biggest question mark in our mind from an operator's standpoint was, you know, are, are people interested in this? And are they willing to travel, you know, from wherever they're going to travel from throughout the metro area or beyond to this location for an event like this? And they did. And, and not, not only did they travel, but they enjoyed themselves. And so, you know, with that, and with us viewing it as a success, you know, and kind of from the comments leading up to that, we, we knew that the, the right thing to do and really the necessary thing to do was to amend our IUP, to include language and, and kind of update the narrative to make sure everyone was on the same page as far as what we were doing onsite and what we were intending to do. In starting the process with the amendments, just to kind of speak now to the request for special events beyond the Doobie Dabbler, you know, in, in operating over the last six years, other things that have presented themselves as opportunities for, you know, this site and frankly, our family and the, the businesses that we operate on it have been just, just frankly, special events. And it's not something that is written in our IUP. Some really prime examples are, you know, churches, schools, and corporations. And, you know, it's, it's two, three, four requests a year that we get saying, hey, you guys got this awesome site that's set up, you know, you really don't utilize it from Monday through Friday. You know, what if I brought my company out and I threw a company picnic on a Thursday evening for three and a half hours and, you know, pay you a flat fee? And, you know, it's relatively low impact on us, but it certainly allows us the opportunity to make more money and utilize the space. That same request has come through, like I said, with churches and various other groups. And so, in going through this process and wanting to make some changes to the IUP, that's certainly something we wanted to include, to give ourselves the flexibility to utilize the space further.
So, just to be, just to be clear then, because when we start this, this is about the Severs family. Family Festival this one day, but really, this motion then includes, could include other events during the year. Is that right?
Commissioner, and yes. So, just to be clear, I guess from my perspective, currently, we are operating a fall festival that runs weekends, Saturdays and Sundays, throughout September and October. Additionally, throughout the winter months, there is a drive-through light show, and that is something that operates seven days a week. So, there is quite a bit of activity on the site currently, specific to our requests. We are requesting to add really the language in there and an understanding that we would like to host an annual event specific to cannabis and an adult-only event, at least as I see it now. It worked very well last year, that it was the weekend before we opened the fall festival for families. It's just everything's already set up. We utilize a ton of the same infrastructure. It's just looking really nice so that really, we're just shouldering on a season we're already ready for. So, that I hope addresses that specific question. Now, to the special events, I've said to this body and certainly the township before, you know, it's expensive for us to be open. You know, we have staff, and we got to get the property ready. You know, my intent would be to utilize this property for as a little amount of time as we can throughout the seasons that it's the easiest. Now, that really is going to be that those September and October months, when everything's kind of there and ready to go, you know? Now, we have had a request, and I think it's a good example to note, of a food truck festival that came to us a number of years ago and said, hey, you've got a forty-acre parking lot that is perfect. You know, what we would love to do is come in, and I don't remember if it were June or July, I just, I don't remember the detail of that, but we would love to come in and bring in, you know, sixty food trucks, you know, obviously porta-potties and certain, you know, kind of more or less bring their own infrastructure, and host a food truck festival utilizing only the parking area, you know, for one day in June or July. Now, although that seems, yeah, it seems logical or it's very doable, you know, my mind instantly goes to, you know, we're using the whole parking lot throughout the growing seasons for alfalfa. And the O'Loughlin's are wonderful partners in helping us manage that parking area. So, to start to try to, you know, kind of work that in where it would, you know, coincide with the perfect cutting, I don't know how that would work. It might work great, it might not. Would we love to have the flexibility to see if we could make that work? Yes. Do I see most of these special events being utilized through that September and October space? Yeah, I do.
Mr. Chair.
I'm confused about something. When you are having this cannabis event, what are, you're selling cannabis, you're selling...
Well, may I?
Yes.
Okay. So, really, we're hosting, we're the host to an event. And the format last year was we had a number of vendors. Each of those vendors are, you know, bound by state law as to what they can and can't do. Last year, you know, the law was not quite set in stone, but some of those vendors would have the ability to retail cannabis products, some of them would not. Last year, we did a pretty good job of kind of finding this balance of some cannabis vendors, some not. You know, there were people selling popcorn and hot cookies and clothing, et cetera. But I don't know if I answered your question.
No, you're getting there.
Okay.
But let me just put this out there, because this is what my concern is. And I have a lot of experience in the liquor industry. My husband was in it for sixty years, or maybe fifty years. But in the liquor industry, if you're in a bar and you're getting served in a bar, somebody knows what you've had to drink. And theoretically, at a certain point, they cut you off. My concern about cannabis in a huge event like this, because this is big, is I'm worried about the scope of the cannabis operation, and I'm worried about the control. Because here's a specific question. If I walk in and I want to buy, I don't even know how many pounds, how many pounds is really a load of cannabis?
Doesn't take pounds.
Well, I want to buy a large amount of cannabis. Is there anybody that's going to say to me, I can't sell you that, or you can't buy that much? Because, you know, then you go back to your, just, please let me just finish. You go back to your group, and then we all do whatever we're going to do with it, smoke it, chew it, eat it, whatever, and then we all get in our cars and go home. And that's a real concern for me, because I don't think you have the inherent controls that you have in serving an alcoholic beverage. Come up and sign in, please.
Should I address that question first, or...
Yeah, go ahead. Anybody.
But I mean, I, I guess, so I think there's, you know, at least one important distinction first, and that is, you know, consumption, right? On-site consumption versus, you know, purchase of product. And I think in this case, there's both going on. You know, the state certainly has outlined specific laws as to how that works, actually very similar to alcohol. Whether you're familiar with, you know, how those laws work or not, you know, I would say it's, it is very similar to alcohol, and, you know, if someone appears as though they've had too much, not being able to, you know, serve them, so to speak. And so, those laws, I think, are in place. And so, you know, again, as an event operator, we would certainly need to make sure that the vendors are adhering to all those state guidelines and state laws. I don't know if that at least helps. I just wanted to certainly make the distinction between onsite consumption and purchase, you know, because there are instances where someone could purchase something and bring it home for home consumption as well.
Of course, of course.
Mr. Robbins.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
You know, I think what she, but let's say I'm there, and I buy four pounds of cannabis. You don't have any limit on that. I mean, you know, these people are going to be able to buy as much as they want. I might consume some there, I might, so I think what she's getting at, are you going to have any limits on what you can buy or what you can consume?
Sure.
Because in bars, you can cut people off, et cetera, et cetera.
Sure. And again, I think I would have to defer in some ways to state law. There are, you know, laws in place to say any one individual can possess a certain amount of cannabis or cannabis products at any given time. Now, you know, are we as event operators going to be able to know exactly how much product each person has on their person? Probably not, you know? I guess where my mind goes to more is the, you know, the consumption, or in this case, and I think where your question is going, overconsumption. And that really would need to be, you know, each specific vendor that is offering that would need to be able to make sure that their, you know, employees or people that are serving are skilled and checking for that concern.
Mr. Chairman, good question. I'm looking at my presentation here, and I see we talk about music, traffic, attendance, and cannabis, and it says here that Minnesota has not issued commercial licenses for adult-use cannabis sales and adult-use cannabis. Cannabis will not be sold onsite or be part of the event. Is that different now, or how is that setting up here?
Yeah, that, you know, I guess I would have to...
I mean, if it's not, if you're not going to be able to sell it, then it kind of comes of, becomes a beer/wine tasting event or a cannabis tasting event, right?
Correct.
So, that, so we are not going to be selling, but we may be tasting.
Yeah, I think the, yeah, sorry, I'm reading my own writing here. Yeah, I mean, the...
I think it's on, on my page, it's one-twenty-nine of one-hundred-and-forty-seven, but I don't know what page it's for you, so...
One-forty-nine?
One-twenty-nine.
One-twenty-nine.
Right here, number four. I just was curious if that is in fact the situation, or if it isn't. But I think we just need some clarification. I think the key here is, are we selling, or we're not selling, but we're distributing for taste?
Yeah.
For sampling.
Yeah, yeah. I think, I think that's the spirit of that, you know, that number four. You know, the spirit of the event is to invite vendors, you know, have them showcase products, cannabis or non, you know, certainly have things for sale, and, you know, I think to your points, sir, sampling.
Mr. Chair, I think we'd probably be more comfortable if, the scale of this is part of what is interesting to me, because there's room for so many people to be there. And while these laws were written, I doubt that they were written to address an event the size of what could happen.
Maybe your gentleman behind you might have a appropriate comment here.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of guys that want to talk that are probably more, more skilled than I, so...
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, so the gentleman behind me will probably give you more information, but we purposely included in the packet, well, I should reference the, here we go. So, these are the recommended changes to the conditions. So, condition number five specifically says, "The temporary cannabis event shall meet all requirements of the State of Minnesota Office of Cannabis Management and Scott County zoning regulations for a temporary cannabis event. The event shall be limited to two days, held during the allotted fall festival." So, what we're then referencing is the Office of Cannabis Management. So, this is the document. You can see it stated April eighteenth. So, Mitch and Severs have made application, and he can explain what's all in that application. But as part of their application to the State Office of Cannabis Management, they have included that they would like to annually host this two-day event. So, you can see in here that the state OC M covers a lot of what you're talking about. On page two of that document, it references all the statutes pertaining to public consumption and then local considerations. But there would be a lot, and then sale of cannabis products at the event. So, they would be required to provide proof that they've received a license for a temporary cannabis event.
And I get that, okay? But it seems to me like the cannabis laws, because we have been following these at all of our meetings, where we are with the cannabis laws, are pretty narrow in focus right now and address like an individual vendor. And my concern is then, instead of just having an individual vendor, you have fifty-five of them lined up in a row. And they're all subject to the rules that are in the state, but it's now times fifty-five. I just want you to make me feel more comfortable, okay?
Just stay with your name, sir.
I'd love to. My name is Matt Kennivan. I'm the founder of the Beer Dabler, which has been putting on twenty-one-plus events for the last sixteen years. My largest event is at the state fairgrounds, where there's fourteen thousand people that are drinking from a hundred and eighty breweries in the course of four hours from start to finish. And in that sixteen years, I've never had one incident, so to speak, of something bad happened. But that's separate. But what I want to talk about with the Doobie Dabler is before, before, two years ago, I had like a preconceived notion of what a cannabis festival was. I just pictured like Cheech and Chong movies with smoke billowing everywhere, and it's just out of control. Not at all, not, not at all. In fact, a lot of the vendors have non-dosed, no-dose products, so you can sample their drinks that has zero cannabis, THC, hemp, anything in there, and you're tasting just the sample of, you know, the taste in your mouth. One of the, one of the major things that I've learned over the years is to cover your ass. And we put plans in place to do just that. And, you know, we've partnered with Mystic Lake to have a busing system from all over the city that comes to Mystic Lake, and then one bus that comes to the festival. So, it's not, everybody's just getting in their car and driving. We also provide designated driver tickets to patrons, so they are coming prepared, so they're not getting high and driving. It's not, it's not just get as blazed as you possibly can think and just party down. It's, one of the biggest surprises to me last year was the demographics. The demographics, you had seniors, you had, you know, twenty-one-year-old, you had rich people, you had, you know, people of color, you had, you had all the walks of life, and it was just a very chill vibe where you had, you sit down, you listen to this band over here, and then you go over and listen to another band, and then you go try some clothes on, or you try some food. You know, in this event, there's twenty-five-plus food trucks that will be represented there amongst other people who are just providing other non-dosed THC products as well, shopping, art, culture. It's, there's a lot more to this than cannabis. It's more of a celebration of cannabis. And as far as somebody buying quantities of marijuana, it won't happen, it doesn't happen. Four pounds is a lot of cannabis, or two pounds, or even one pound. It's, they're not coming out here to buy quantity. They're coming out here for the experience of the celebration of the plant.
But could they buy quantity if they decided to devote themselves to doing that?
Well, it would be against the law. So, I mean, the law would, you know, can you go to the liquor store and buy two thousand cases of beer? Yeah, you could.
You can go to a bar, and at a certain point, you're drunk, and you're not supposed to drink anymore, but they don't cut you off.
Valid point.
Drink yourself into a coma.
It's...
I guess I'm looking for, is there any way there could be a control in place that Severs would initiate to protect yourself as much as anybody else?
There is hundreds of people that are working on these rules and establishing a safe environment. You know, like, the rules from the OC M has come out, and it's a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty pages. You know, we're going to have to have video cameras on the entire event. We're going to have to have the event completely fenced off, and it's a large area. We are going to follow to a T everything that you can possibly do, but if we lived on what-ifs, I mean, where would we be? I mean, we would never have an open-heart surgery if we followed the rules and said, like, you can't do that to a person. But, but here we are, things have evolved, and we've done things that are different than what they were before. So, the best I can say is, there are what-ifs. But last year, we didn't have a single instance of, you know, anybody that overdosed, and in cannabis, you wouldn't say overdose, but...
Overindulged.
Yeah, overindulged. Whereas, you know, in a beer festival, it's clear, like, when somebody has had too much. So, you know, all we can do is the best that we can do, but what would stop somebody from, you know, having too many beers at the Renaissance Festival and then driving home? You know, it's, the laws are in place to protect, you know...
Matt, I think part of the anxiousness that the commission has sometimes with this is the same that you had. Nobody knows what this is like until you go there and you see it and see what's happening. But part of this about, you know, following the regulations of the OC M is that because this is newly regulated, something new that didn't exist five years ago, and that this is a new thing, and that you are taking steps and taking, you know, how do you control this so that it is what you envision it to be?
Right.
And I guess that's, that's our concern as planners, and to say that, yeah, this is going to work, and it's going to be a success, and you said, boy, this was a big success last year, and we were pleased with the way it went. That's a good thing. That's a good thing. How do you keep that? And when we talk about saying, okay, well, we're going to allow this every year, how do we keep that going so that it does be successful for you and a good positive event for the community, too? Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, that's what our thing here on this side is, is... So that's, that's what our thing here on this side is, is that we have assurances that that happens. And, and how does that happen, you know? Fuck, being licensed by the OCM is, is a big step in that because they, they are, have spent a lot of time doing this. But this is all new stuff. You know, these laws didn't exist two years ago.
Mr. Chair.
You know, I'm, I'm gonna get back to what she was talking about. I think when you first read this, you think of clouds of marijuana and, and stuff like that. And clearly that, that's not what this is gonna be about. And, and even in the past, this is, there, there certainly will be some cannabis use, but it's not gonna be, I don't think, to excess. One of the things I, and I think you alluded to it, but I, I wanted to ask was, you do have provisions on a, in a, in an event like this for, um, Scott County officers, police officers? You will have those people on site?
Yes.
Correct, yep. As well as, as well as, um, uh, armed security is in, in the premise, premise as well.
Yeah. And, and I think just to address.
Use the microphone.
Oh, yes, sir.
And, and I think just to address the other, you know, I, I would agree. You know, I think the, uh, the OCM is probably even doing their best to get everything right. Is there a chance that there needs to be changes made to some of this? Probably. I mean, I, I, I would guess that, you know, in a new industry like this and with these things coming online, um, they're probably gonna need to either make amendments or adjustments to their language. Um, I think it's important that the language within, you know, what we're talking about is always adhering to, you know, the rules and regulations of the OCM and the state laws. Um, you know, if the county feels strongly that there needs to be more specific language of, you know, that the county would like to, you know, be able to look at this or analyze it or have like an annual review, um, certainly something we're open to. Uh, it's absolutely our intent to run, uh, you know, a good event, you know, a well-run, a safe, um, event, you know, in Scott County. Um, and I think that can be done. I, I really do. You know, our, our family certainly has, I think, a reputation of running quality events. I don't wanna, you know, tarnish that at all. Um, I do think there's opportunity here to do it the right way. We're committed to doing that. Um, will there be, uh, changes along the way? I do believe so. Well, we need to make sure we, we can adjust and, and make sure though that we're doing the right thing. Um, yes, I do.
I guess, uh.
Mark.
Uh, I would ask the county staff if there is a plan for the enforcement of, uh, these, all these, uh, rules and, uh, that we have form, formulated.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hussein, so yes. Um, what we are proposing as far as the changes and enforcement to the IUP. Um, so as you see on your screen here, condition number five pertains specifically to the, uh, annual cannabis event, um, which essentially, you know, goes to getting that state licensure. Um, as Mitch said, we met with him and with the township and we invited, uh, Captain Steve Collins from the sheriff's office. Um, and he, he and Mitch, I think, have a direct line. So any traffic or any issues that have occurred with Severs, um, you know, Mitch and, and Captain Collins have been in communication a, as well as with county staff. So we, we feel we have a good, uh, open line of communication to address any issues as they come up. Um, and then, as you, uh, just asked about notification and how do we enforce this? So condition number six would be towards those private events. And, uh, what we were proposing for those private events would be that they be allowed to do those, um, in a similar manner to what we have as, or what we term a large assembly. So in county ordinance, we have a, a large assembly permit is required for any event that would have over two-hundred-and-fifty people. So as Mitch said, if, if they're leasing or renting out to a school or to a church group that maybe has a hundred people, you know, that's fine. But if they're talking about like, uh, a, a summer food truck festival where you're gonna be, uh, having a, a huge number of people, they would then be required to notify the county and the township of that event, um, prior to it occurring. And we would bring the sheriff's office in, in, on those discussions too, just to make sure everybody understands what's going on. But yes, the county and township through the IUP have the ability to review and monitor what they're doing.
Greg, you may want to point out condition number twenty-five to the planning commission that deals specifically with that.
Yep, sorry, page two. Uh, condition twenty-five, um, so Severs shall be in compliance with, at all times with the conditions of the IUP. And then if we receive notification of any violations, um, you know, we can deal with that through, through the IUP review process. And if there are significant issues, it would be brought back before this group.
Greg, as it relates to condition twenty, I read in the staff report that last year's Doobie Dabbler did generate a complaint on noise. So I wonder if you could address the condition twenty and maybe ask the applicant to talk about how they're gonna manage noise?
Sure. So condition twenty, as Brad referenced, talks about amplified noise. Uh, being in compliance with state Minnesota noise rules, um, which are generally amplified music can only be done during daytime hours, which I believe is till ten PM. Um, and in their conditions, uh, or in their narrative, they talk more about, um, music for ambiance, so. Okay, so here we go. So the, in their Doobie Dabbler narrative, number one, um, so Mitch put together, "This event is not a music-themed festival. They're aware and sensitive to the neighbors' township, that we don't allow those." Um, per the IUP in the Fall Festival, this event would include appropriate music for ambiance and atmosphere. And I don't know if Mitch, you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, and, and I, I think to, to Brad's point, um, you know, last year, I, I like to think we have a pretty good relationship with our neighbors. Um, before, I, I guess, putting forth this application to the township and county, you know, I went around door-to-door and talked to each neighbor. Uh, many of them I had already been in contact with, um, you know, regarding last year's event. Uh, but really just telling them, hey, this is something we're moving forward with. It was a success. Um, the county has asked us to formalize it. I want you to hear it from me. Um, that, that's just a little history, I suppose. But to, to Brad's point, um, there was one neighbor that I think did, uh, have a complaint in regards to noise. Uh, you know, we did, uh, change the, that noise quite quickly, um, you know, in real time. Um, now whether that neighbor, uh, found that adequate or not, I, I, I'm not sure. I, I did speak with him and I know he was very, uh, you know, appreciative that, that we reduced the sound at that, um, moment. Um, you know, we're always trying to kind of make adjustments to, you know, direction noise in certain ways that is least impactful, uh, to the neighbors and, and the neighborhood. Um, I think as probably a lot of people are familiar with, you know, that corridor, uh, you know, noise kind of bounces. In the fall, the leaves start to fall and, and it, it can be challenging. Um, you know, but a, again, uh, we're committed to, you know, try to do our best to mitigate those issues.
Thank you.
Chair. I just want to comment that, uh, I'm a neighbor to the south of full length of the thing and I honestly don't even know when our event is running, you know? So that's how well on my side, I don't know on the other side or anything like that. But, um, it's important that they stay up with the times. If they don't, they'll get chewed up, you know? So, you know, anything new is good for you, you know, that.
Okay.
Just a comment.
Yep, thank you. Anyone else like to make comment?
Uh, Sue Murphy. I live up the hill directly from the festival. Mitch has been a great neighbor to us. That is very true. Um, I think the concern that I and the homeowner I live with have is potentially about the noise. Um, we run a sound company, so we're really good at earplugs and noise. But we were a little surprised, we might have been out of town when he did the door, door knocking last year. Um, so we didn't know that the festival was gonna happen and woke up that morning to our dog growling and I was like, what in the hell is that? Um, and it was a lot of electronic music and it made sense that it would be, you know, once I figured out what it was, I was like, okay, it's not us. It's not, like, nothing's happening. Um, but it did sound a little more like a concert. And I remember when we were back originally, when Severs moved in, they've been a great neighbor. Um, it was the Fall Festival and the light show, which I attend both. My dog loves the light show, he knows that. Um, but I'm concerned a little bit about the expansion of that because even some smaller events, things like a food truck festival, that is closer to our house. Um, you know, there is this concern that, am I gonna know that this is happening? Are we gonna need to do special things? Cause we were gonna have some kind of event at our house ourselves and now there's like extra traffic that we have to warn people for, you know? Those kinds of things are the things I think we're concerned about. So it's not even about the cannabis, like, we're all good with that. They've been great neighbors. But we were a little surprised and I think the language needs to be a little bit more specific because we didn't know what was gonna happen last year. Um, and I would hate to see like every single potential holiday become something or even every day of the week become something where there's more traffic in the neighborhood, there's more noise coming up. Our fire pit isn't actually in our backyard, so it looks down over them. Usually the leaf cover's great. We like the pumpkin cannon, it kind of cracks us up. But, you know, kids screaming all day gets to be old after several weeks. And I love the fact that their festival is there, cause I do use it. Um, but I do have this concern, um, just about how much we expand or, or how we can continue to have a good relationship, you know? Because you have been such good neighbors, so.
Thank you.
Ken, uh, if I could just ask, are you concerned about the noise? Is that one of your concerns?
That is one of our concerns. That is one of our concerns, yeah.
And when you say noise, do you mean it was just too loud? It was like a rock band or what?
It was, it was that it was like a full day, constant noise, right? And it, so it was like, um, we, when we had been in the original, Severs is moving in, there was this like, there's not gonna be concerts, there's not gonna be stuff. And it got to concert volume for a while. I mean, we have a stadium PA in our, our storage area. And so I was like, huh, that's actually pretty loud. I mean, it sounded just constant bass for a while, DJs playing, um, you know? And again, my dog is a little bit sensitive to low grumbly things and so he was kind of upset the whole day. I, if I would have known that it was happening and could have made arrangements, I probably would have felt better about that. And again, we have people over, our band rehearses in the basement. So we know what noise in the area is and we probably are contributing to some too. It's just about, you know, if suddenly there was six food truck festivals and a July fourth festival and all these other things, you know, even in the, in the winter months, you know, they're great now about the traffic. But when the Renaissance Festival was having some issues, you know, they had issues with it too and we couldn't get out of our driveway. So we just, any kind of large draw, we have these concerns about what it's gonna be like. Um, but we love that there's so much to do here. So again, I'm not trying to complain against them, they've been wonderful neighbors. It's just, I, I wanna make sure that this isn't just a, you know, suddenly we're gonna have tons of monthly festivals. With lots of noise.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, I would like to ask you about your concern, whether you are concerned about the frequency of the events being had too frequent, then, uh, once or twice, you can tolerate the noise level.
Yeah.
But if it is happening every weekend.
Yeah, so for instance, if it's this, if it's the festival, it's a few days before they open, that's great. I think that, like, that's fantastic. It's more about the language for some special events and then if there's special events that are happening more often. And suddenly, well, okay, we've got that event the two weekends or the two days before the, the regular weekend festival opens up. Maybe we're expanding something into the timeframe of the week and it's not just weekends then in September and October. It's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, you know? It's that kind of thing to me that gets concerning as a person who owns the property there. And again, love the regular, like, this is our weekend thing. Um, but I think the language for me is a little scary and so much that if, could all of a sudden be like, we're living next to an amphitheater. Um, and we wouldn't want to be living next to an amphitheater. We want to have the nice festivals that we've seen so far.
So again, the, my question to county staff is, uh, do we have anything to do with the, to limit the frequency of, uh, of the events that they plan on holding?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hussein, um, you know, Mitch can speak. I, I think Mitch touched on this, that the majority of the intent of the private, um, private events would be during their Fall Festival, when their corn maze is set up and when all their, you know, uh, their corn pit and all that stuff is set up, that they have groups, schools, churches, private businesses that want to come in and use those amenities. Um, he mentioned the food truck festival as kind of one of the random outliers that could happen in June or July. So what we can do is, when we, when we look at condition number six, and maybe I'll just zoom in. So we, we crafted condition number six to be very similar to, as I said, the county's large assembly, uh, ordinance. So we have a large assembly permit that is required when you have an event that would have two-hundred-and-fifty or more individuals. And that, you know, if it wasn't Severs, if somebody just was having an event with two-hundred-and-fifty people, they have to make application to the county, uh, with notification to the township. And, you know, there's this whole application that they need to submit that explains their event, how it operates, et cetera, et cetera. So what we put in here is that if Severs would have a food truck festival in June that is gonna have over two-hundred-and-fifty people, they need to kind of go through that large assembly process, which means county staff would be notified, they'd have to provide information. You know, he talked about parking, uh, you know, portable bathrooms, traffic management. You know, the sheriff's office is gonna be notified. Um, the township would be notified of that, so they'd likely make a recommendation on it. So we could, um, we could add language there if we wanted to, that any event that would have over that two-fifty would require, uh, notification to adjacent landowners. I think that would be reasonable.
Yeah, I do think.
That'd be a simple solution to that.
So we can.
Make that a amendment.
Yeah, if the commission is open to that, I would just make that part of the recommendation.
Thanks. Anyone else like to make comment at this time?
Um, I've had a very good relationship with Mitch since he came to our township. Um, he's come to me for shooting ideas back and forth. He asked me what I thought about having this Doobie Dabbler long before he even came for permits and stuff. And we talk things over. Um, over the years, I've monitored his festival and stuff. Last year, I monitored the Doobie Dabbler. Um, I had gone on to, they call it Minnesota Bluff Drive, the ladies driveway over there. Um, I did it three times on Saturday and three times on Sunday. And, um, you know, when you're addressing the noise, it depends on which way the wind is blowing and how hard the wind is blowing. So when they started, it may not have drifted the noise up towards the hill, to the east. They have all their booths and stages facing towards the highway, so it matches up to the highway noise. Um, so when I was up on the driveway, okay, what am I hearing loudest? The traffic or the sound? The first time I was there, it was definitely the traffic. The wind had switched, okay? Now I'm hearing a little bit more of the music and I was hearing some of the bass, loud bass sounds. I didn't think it was a big deal. Um, then I'm not there all day long. I came back a little bit later. I came back a little bit later and it was getting louder. So I called Mitch. Within 10 minutes, that bass and everything was turned out to where I was hearing traffic again. Excuse me, I gotta look at my notes. So, I did go in while the doobie dabbler was going on. I walked through the grounds. I observed the, I don't know how many people were there on Saturday? Couple hundred? And there again, it was, like he said, people from all walks of life. Was the smell of marijuana present? Yes, it was. Getting back to Commissioner Hentges' question about how do you control that, wouldn't be a whole lot different if I went and bought two, 24-pack cases and brought them there and started drinking them. There's nobody monitoring how much I drank there. Well, this is kind of on the same thing. They aren't selling it there, they're selling maybe the samples of it, but you can't buy 10 ounces or whatever. So, and I did talk to the deputies that were there. Asked them if there was any problems, any, he says, just another day, another event. So they were happy with it. And then I asked about the traffic. Mitch does an excellent job of getting people off the road. If there starts to be three quart, three or four cars backed up on Louisville Road, man, some, he gets an officer out there and they get him off the road. So, I, as a township, I'm really happy the way he runs the things. The township is supporting his, uh, his application here. Um, as far as the, the picnics and, and business retreats or whatever, I'm a businessman, he's a business, we need to let the man do his business instead of micromanaging it. So, with that, if you have any other questions, I'll retire.
I think that's it, Bob. Thank you for sharing that though.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to make comment at this time? Does anyone entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Robbins, second.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Hentges. All in favor, would I? I will entertain a motion at this time, or?
Make a motion.
I'll make an emotion, approval as suggested.
You wanna read the motion?
Pardon?
You wanna read the motion?
Oh, yeah. Based on a criteria for approval listed in a staff report, I recommend approval of the Intern Use Permit Amendment for Severs Festival to operate a private day park for Severs Family Festival, noting that this recommendation is subject to the conditions listed in the staff report and must be satisfactory addressed prior to the county board considering of the I U P amendment.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pika, second by Commissioner Robbins. All, any discussion further? Hearing none, all in favor, would I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much for everyone who, uh, offered testimony this evening on this. It's been very helpful for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is a request to approve the amendment to Scott County zoning ordinance number three, chapter 17 dash three definitions, uh, 17 dash five performance standards, 17.9 lower potency hemp edible retailers, and chapter 20 dash four use table to permit the outdoor growing of up to one half acre cannabis in the Arctic Agricultural Preservation District in the sale of lower potency hemp edible products in the commercial zoning district or in any establishment operating under a state liquor issued liquor license. And I see that, uh, Mr. Schrader's up at the podium, so he must be making the staff this evening.
Yeah, sticking on the topic of cannabis, um, county board adopted chapter 17, the cannabis regulations here late last year. This board obviously was real involved in putting together those regulations, holding public hearings on those rules. And one of the items that came up during the public hearing for the cannabis rules was from Spring Lake Township where they asked, well, what about outdoor cultivation? Could outdoor cultivation be, be a use that would be acceptable in urban expansion of rural residential areas like they have in their township? And at the time, um, I think we were getting close to, to the end of, of our whole review of cannabis rules and, and, and everybody was wearing down a little bit on it, but the, the thought was that, you know, we don't know a whole lot about, you know, what's gonna come of the state, state guidelines at that point in time. We, we weren't really sure what the impacts of outdoor grow, uh, might be, so let's hold off on, you know, allowing outdoor grow in areas outside of industrial until we know a little bit more. Well, we weren't operational for more than a few months and we had somebody come forward to us, uh, has a relative in Blakely Township, would like to grow a half acre of cannabis on the property. No, no manufacturing into other products, no sales of, of cannabis there, just the grow operation. Uh, that individual is here with us tonight. Uh, he did attend a Blakely Township meeting. Blakely Town Board said, yeah, well, we, we're fine with it, but you need to go work with the county because they're the ones that issue the permits for these type of things. So he came and talked to us and we told him, well, right now it's not allowed. You have to be in an industrial area in order to grow, grow cannabis. But that was the trigger for, um, looking at bringing it back to this board. We also had another item that we wanted to put some clarity to, and that was the sale of low potency hemp products. We don't feel we fully addressed that in the first go around of the rules. It, it was fuzzy as to where it was actually allowed and where we were seeing it likely to get sold, uh, in the future. So what we're proposing is, um, two new land uses to be added to our land use matrix. One of them is the cannabis grower outdoor, and that would allow the outdoor growing of up to a half acre of cannabis, um, as a conditional use permit in our A1 district. Our A1 district is our ag preservation district. It's, uh, one home per 40 acre density, probably our lowest density areas of the county and our largest slot size. The other, uh, use we are, are looking to add is the low potency hemp edible retailer. Right now, that use is kinda lumped into the cannabis retail business up above and we don't feel it is appropriate there. We feel it should be, um, more at the, either a commercial area or at, uh, a facility that has a state issued liquor license, because a lot of what you're talking about is, uh, these THC infused drinks, um, and gummies with that type of use. So we're, we're looking at those two new uses, um, and we're looking at excluding lower potency hemp edibles from the cannabis retail business. So it'll be fall under its own category here.
Excuse me, do you know what, uh, Minnesota statute 342.01 subdivision point 50, what the potency is?
I think it's, uh, point 0.5 or something. I, I don't know what the potency is, maybe, maybe 10 milligrams?
10 milligrams? Okay.
Okay.
Can, can I just ask, so, on that first one, a grower outdoor, you kind of say what kind of acres you can grow at there, but you can't sell it there, you have to sell it somewhere else. Am I right about that?
Correct. It'd be similar to other agricultural products where they grow it and then take it somewhere for?
I mean, you could grow it and then take it over somewhere else and sell it, is that right?
That's correct, Commissioner Robbins. You would take it to somebody else who had manufactured into a product or they would retail it for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mister, Mister Chairman, Marty? Asking for a friend, about how much can you grow on a half, half an acre?
Do you want?
Yeah.
God, to come up and ask, I, I, cause I can't answer that.
I'm just, I'm asking for a friend.
She's curious, how much on that?
Please sign in and start with your name, so we have it in the record.
I am John Burgess, LLC Johnny Green Thumb. I am going for my license to be a Minnesota grower. At a half acre, you can grow somewhere around 2,135 plants at a three foot interval, so as long as you do a three foot square. The way that I'm doing, and I wanna do it at 1,000, so then I can take more time and be more non-aggressive. I wanna go 100% organic. My goal with my plants is to be zero impact on any environmental issues whatsoever. Everything that I've used from seed to finish is non-toxic, non-chemical, non-spillage, non-everything.
You can harvest quite a bit of?
Oh, yes ma'am, you definitely can.
Yeah, I guess so, a lot more than I thought.
Yeah, so 1,000 plants would be very reasonable and I'd have room to spare, but with, uh, with the first township, I agreed either half acre or 500 plants, and this was just the comfortability of what they thought. And then I started talking to Marty as well, well, you can stretch out 2,000 plants. And I will, after I get approval from, or whatever comments that you guys make, I do wanna go back to the township and say, hey, you know, I've talked to the county and you did say go through this, they said that I can up this to 1,000, I'm still within the parameter of the half acre, what do you feel? If they would like me to stick with the 500, I'm in my word, I definitely will. If they'd let me go to 1,000, that's perfect. If they wanna see how much we can actually do it for a social experiment, I love that idea too. So I'm, I'm 100% being a guinea pig, yes sir.
Yeah, well, so, all right, fine, 500 or 1,000 plants? What is that? Is the, how many pound, I mean, if I saw it in the store, would it be five or six big boxes, a whole?
No, no, no. So, um, we'll have somewhere around five different strains, uh, five different strains. It'd be like your Budweiser, Milwaukee, your Corona, different flavors, different types. What that entails is every pound that I'm growing, I am expecting somewhere between three quarter to a full pound out of it. So out of 1,000 plants, should get somewhere between 850 to 900 pounds. Now that right there, if I do a terrible job and I don't know what I'm doing in Minnesota, just beats the holy cow out of me, it's $400 per plant. If I did a decent job and I mothered them hens perfectly good, it's $800 per plant. If we go full on board and I cut everything down, I'll have to cultivate, put all these into buds, put them into bags, sell them at, uh, $1,000 per pound, and then all of the waste material, I go to another cultivator and they can utilize that for their oils.
Fair enough, thank you.
Quick question about that before we just move on. How do you keep the plants from getting out of that, that was, out of your half acre? Seeds and stuff spreading into the?
So, with, uh, one main concern was hemp. Hemp was a huge concern. That is a huge concern with me too, because my ladies, I would not like them to introduce to any suitors, and male is hemp.
Right.
Female is marijuana.
Right.
So I am trying to keep my harem as pure as possible.
Because, well, just, yeah, because naturally it grows here too.
And as long as hemp isn't within the perimeter of five miles from my ladies, there will be no seeds. In the growing industry, we consider a sesamea plant, which is a seedless plant, a Jesus seed if it comes out, because its abnormality is just, it's fantastic. And can I just address with the doobie dazzler before? Two ounces is what a person can carry on them legally in public, four pounds is what you can have in your storage unit at home, and anything past an eighth, I don't think a whole lot of you guys would be doing more than giggling and attacking a fridge. So if it puts your mind at ease for doobie dazzler.
Can I just ask one more?
Oh, yes, please do.
THC content has been going up significantly.
Yes.
And, and what do you, would you say your plants would come out in THC content?
So from like the 1970s, it was, uh, steady 10% to 12%, and then as soon as we got into the 90s, it started going closer to 15 to 17% where cannabis cup was woo-hoo with 18. Now it's upwardside to closer to 30%. Now there is ways to dilute that when you're manufacturing it, when you're utilizing your gummies, your chocolates, your cookies, any kind of thing that you would cook or break it down with, you can, you can manufacture that in as what it is. I'm trying to get a marijuana permit, so that means I want to get mine as high as Minnesota will allow me to do, so I can put mine on the top shelf and then when everybody thinks marijuana, Johnny Green Thumb.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Question?
Sure. Just got one more question.
I presume that you are gonna take necessary steps to protect your product?
Yes, sir, 100%.
And you're gonna have something, some way of irrigating it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So it goes, uh, where the property is right now, it goes adjacent to an, uh, pre-existing draining dish. So, uh, we're gonna do a little French drain, which honestly, I don't have any runoff whatsoever. It's gonna be fed with a well that's modernized by me every single three days or as when it needs. I don't have any chemicals that are abrasive to the land. I mean, the only thing that's really gonna happen after a real good watering for me is the grass is gonna grow a little bit stronger around the border. Is there any more questions?
No, thank you. Very helpful.
One more, one more comment. And this is for staff. I think the proposed amendment, as you've got written, covers the bases.
Yeah, one, one comment I didn't make, wanna make on the acreage. So, on the acreage, the half acre is the amount that the Office of Cannabis, Cannabis Management will allow someone to grow with a micro license. If you had a meso license, they would allow up to two, I think, acres of growth, and then with a cannabis cultivator, I think it's up to 40 acres of grow. So, this is the smallest increment, um, that's permitted under their licenses, and that's where we wanted to start, well, at the small size of, of a, of a half acre, even though it does sound like a lot of plants. We wanted to start on the small size, on, on our areas with our larger slots, with our, our lowest density, to, to get a feel for this stuff before we would open it up to other, other parts of the county. And that's why we, that was our approach with the, with the ordinance update there. All these operations would need to comply with our performance measures, which require the 1,000 foot setback from church or school or place of worship, 500 foot setback from a residential treatment facility, public parks that are regularly attended by kids, those sort of things, and 500 feet from a residence that isn't on, on the property. So those, those setbacks would have to be maintained to the grow facility. So those, those, uh, requirements still be there. Uh, under number two down below here, we did modify the hours for the sale of the low potency hemp products, uh, just because feeling if they were sold at, um, Dority Tavern, Red Fox Tavern, uh, you'd probably be selling those later than, uh, 9:00 PM in the evening. So we exempted those from those hours of operation. Last change would be just that, section 17 dash nine, where we deal with the low potency hemp edibles, um, where they'd be allowed to be sold, commercial zones or at facilities that have a valid liquor license, feeling that it's similar to alcohol. We did talk to, uh, township supervisors back at a quarterly township supervisor meeting back in February about this. For the most part, I think there was acknowledgement that, yeah, this would be fine to do, do in this fashion. And, and, um, we also, uh, sent this out to, uh, all the town boards for review at the end of April at their meeting in, in May. We only, really only had one, uh, feedback comment, let's go to that, and that was from Sand Creek Township. And what Sand Creek Township is saying in, in this, a comment memo is they wanted, uh, the, the setback standards to be consistent at 1,000 feet, uh, for, for churches and schools and 1,000 feet for residential homes. We aren't able to do that. What, what we have established in, in our rules is what's allowed in state statute. So we, we can't be more restrictive than state statute. So that, that is why we are where we at, where, where we're at, and we can get back to Sand Creek Township on, on that comment.
Mister Chair? Is there, uh, there's no restrictions on what potency you can grow, is there?
Uh, not in the county ordinance and nothing I saw in the state statute or the state requirements.
So I can grow, I mean, if I can do it, I can grow as high a potency as I want, right?
I assume.
Marty, can you, uh, put on the zoning map there?
Yeah.
I think it's just notable, um, this would, the, if, if approved, this half acre grow would be allowed in the A1 zoning districts that Marty's pointing out. It's a lot of our gray parcels there. So it's a lot of Blakely, Bell Plain, parts of.
So, it's a lot of Blakely, Bell Plain, parts of Helena Township, Sand Creek Township. That's where the kind of massive A one is, but you'll find scattered A one parcels even in Spring Lake and Cedar Lake and maybe New Market and Louisville, particularly those large farm parcels that wanted to maintain their egg preservation tax status. And in order to do that, they have to remain zone A one. So, you, there are scattered A one parcels, um, that if passed, then they theoretically could, uh, apply to have an outdoor grow. But most of them you see will be in that Sand Creek, Blakely, Bell Plain, parts of Helena Township.
The vast majority will be in those, those larger areas. And, and the areas within the eastern townships that would allow it would be people that are in the egg preserve program that are keeping their property for long-term agricultural use, and tend to be larger parcels, um, um, larger farmers. So, here's our use matrix, where we added the two, two new, um, two new uses. The outdoor cannabis grow as a conditional use only in the A one. And the lower potency hemp edibles becomes an accessory use in our commercial and then at facilities with, um, with approved state liquor licenses. That pretty much sums up my presentation, I guess. Stand for any, if you have any additional questions, or like, would John back up here to help answer as well?
Yeah.
Just Mister Chair, wanted to clarify, we approve this tonight, it goes to the commissioners, is that right?
Correct, correct. We would likely take this to the commissioners in June.
In June.
This is a public hearing as well.
Yes, it is.
If anyone would like to make comment on this, uh, application before us, they can come up to the podium at this time. I've not seen anybody run up. Oh? Yep, you can come on up and ask a question. It'd be great.
I guess it's more a curiosity question.
Oh, that's what most of ours are.
Cheryl Dusette, Louisville Township, also a resident. But my question is, if it's allowed to be sold at places that have a liquor license, do they also have to have the license to, for, from the state for cannabis?
The O C M, Office of Cannabis Management.
So, like, um, I guess I'm just looking in our township, um, the bowling alley.
Right.
They, they get a liquor license from, so if he wanted to serve any kind of beverages or, you know, that has that, he would have to get a license.
From the O, Office of Cannabis Management. Yep, as well. Is it, any further clarification, you mean?
No, no, I, I just thought of, you know, when it came, comes to the outgrow, outdoor grow, there's additional standards that the Office of Cannabis, Cannabis Management has for outdoor grows, such as these, these facilities have to be fenced with a six-foot tall fence, and it's got to be a heavy duty fence.
Right, so is that included in our ordinance that they comply with those?
Yes, yes. So, they have to, they have to have a license from the Office of Cannabis Management. They're not going to give them a license unless they have a plan that shows what their fencing is. It's got to be a security fence, has to have a locking gate, has to be essentially not visible from outside of the property, so it has to be far enough way out the road and away from property lines.
Which were a lot of the concerns that we had talked about when we discussed this earlier. Okay, very good. Any other questions or comments? This time I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Robbins?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pika. All in favor, would I? Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mister Chair, I recommend approval of the proposed, uh, draft amendments to the zoning ordinances as presented in the staff report, and that these ordinance amendments be forwarded to the county board for consideration and action.
May I have a motion by Commissioner Robbins? Do I have a second?
So you have a?
Second by Commissioner Huber. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, would I?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, so that has been approved, the cannabis ordinance amendments.
Fine.
And I'll go over to our planning manager, Mister Davis.
Yeah, thank you, commissioners. A quick update here, the county board on April fifteenth did approve the comprehensive plan amendment that opened up ten properties in the Liddy area for rural, uh, industrial uses. We think one of the property owners will be coming in with a preliminary plat this summer to start that process. Last week, the board approved the re-zone, uh, of eighty-one acres from A one to A three. Dave and Kenny O'Brien were the property owners in Bell Plain. They approved this conditional use permit amendment to add thirty-seven acres and expand outdoor storage for Paul and Cheryl Dusette in Louisville Township, and finally approved the final plat of Valley View Industrial Park and Three Way Developers Agreement. That was the J M H Land Development on Valley View Drive in Sand Creek Township. You should have an email from me that confirms our bus trip is scheduled for Tuesday, June third. I have your calendars held from noon till four. I'm not sure that we'll need all that time, and I'm, I'm trying to get the, the bus lined up. So, depending on when all that happens and we get our itinerary and where we're going to stop, it could adjust a little bit. And, um, if that creates an issue with you, just let, let me know if, um, if starting at one or something would be an issue or, or not.
Brad, where do we go to, to start it?
Yeah, well, we'll start it here at the government center, yeah. But I'll get those details out to you as soon as we, we know them. So, that's the bus tour. We, I don't think we're going to plan a lunch, but we'll, we'll plan some small snacks and drinks. But, um, plan to eat before you go. I think that's all I have for updates.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Anything else for the cause? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Commissioner Hentges and Commissioner Robbins, all in favor, would I? Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you very much to, uh, the commissioners.